All right, we're going to call this meeting to order at 7:06 PM. Firstly on the agenda, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Chair, if we may call our meeting to order. Go ahead.
Good evening, Rosemary Kennedy, Vice Chair of the Hamilton Board of Selectmen and stead tonight for Jeff Hubbard, our Board Chair. I call this BOS meeting held jointly with the Hamilton Wenham School Committee to order at 7:07 PM. Minutes for this Board of Selectmen meeting will be identical to those of the school committee meeting for the portion of the joint meeting. Thank you.
At this time, I open the floor to any citizens' comments. Okay, moving on, the first thing on the agenda is our student rep report. So, I'm gonna go for it.
Awesome. So, we are here today as the Student Body Government in Hamilton Regional High School to give a presentation about the day-to-day life of students in the district. I'm President Tom Kane.
I'm Connor Ryan, I'm the Vice President.
Dominic Brown, I'm the Student Body Treasurer.
Good evening, I'm Caroline Dent, I'm the Student Body Secretary.
And my name is Nora Sullivan-Horner, I'm a representative for school advisory councils. All right, so we just want to start off, we're going to be talking about the middle school and the high school because we're obviously down at the campus at the regional. So, we actually met with our principal and vice-principal Craig Hovey and Liz Lovell at the middle school to talk about our time there. And we just wanted to refresh on some of the best parts of our middle school experience. And the biggest takeaway we had from our memories in the meeting was transitions because the middle school administration and the teachers are not just tasked with teaching these kids, but also the transition from middle school to high school and the social dynamics that go into creating a whole functioning human being. So, to start us off, as far as interests in the middle school, I've actually been in the music program for a long time, since about 4th grade now. And I never would have pursued music had it not been for the school district because I just, I wouldn't have sought out the classes, it wouldn't have been fun for me without my friends who loved it and a great band director. And I've actually been drum major for two years now, I've been a part of the jazz band, and it all really started in middle school when we had the opportunities to explore that stuff. So, as far as the arts, the interests are really a big thing as far as what middle school has to offer to us.
Okay, so while transitioning socially is very important in middle school, it's also super important to transition academically from elementary school to high school. And one of the major classes that I want to talk about was 8th grade civics. It's one of the only civics classes we do here in the Hamilton Wenham Regional School District, and it really spurred my interest in politics, in government. And I think it's really important that we continue having this class so that kids can learn about, you know, what we do here, what they do at the state level, and what they do at the federal level.
Okay, so I'm going to talk about sports and extracurriculars at the middle school. So, middle school is really the first time that you like have like super organized activities, like it's not a, like two practices a week, it's, it becomes more every day. Me personally, I did all of the plays at the middle school, both the musical and the one-act play, and those were every day after school. It took a lot of discipline to like learn how to do that in middle school and learn how to have something after school every day, get home with your homework, and if you're playing a sport at the same time, just time management is just a huge thing that you learn in middle school. I also did outdoor track in middle school, and I really enjoyed like having a sport every day after school and just like the commitment that it takes. And I think it was a great learning experience to have that in middle school, have sports every day or activities every day after middle school, because when you get to high school, you like do, like whatever you do, you're committed, you're expected to be there every day that you can, and practice is every day after school. So, just learning how to balance like your time management, knowing that you have full commitments was huge for me in middle school.
All right, to close us out, obviously a huge part of middle school is developing the independence and the maturity that a middle schooler, a high schooler, and then of course, post-high schooler needs to have. And that starts with a few forgiving qualities of the schedule in the middle school. So, there are these intervention and enrichment blocks, which are for kids who need to meet with teachers or make up on lost time as far as work, so it's a nice grace period for kids who are working with a more independent schedule. There's also more responsibilities for a middle schooler, so making the bus every day, it's as simple as that, or having the independence of getting to one class at the right time with the right teacher. And then, of course, we've touched on this a little bit, but the social dynamics of middle school can be hard. I think we can all think of one or two friend crises we had in middle school that were really hard, at least us. High schoolers can. So, the middle school does a great job. They can't control everything in a kid's life, but they do a great job stabilizing the academics and the support and giving us the tools we need so that everything's in control, so that whatever we have to figure out on our own, we can.
So, we're now going to move to the high school where we are all currently seniors, class 2020. So, we're going to start with the clubs and extracurricular activities that are available to us as high schoolers. So, to begin, there's the more career-oriented activities like DECA, which as you guys heard their presentation a few weeks ago, is based on sort of, it's a club that, it's focused on business, but it's way more than that. You can do a ton of things, like tomorrow, a few busloads of kids are going to go to Merrimack College and participate in things from communication to marketing to sports to medicine, and it's really a great way to sort of find out what you want to do after college. And we've all, well, I've had a great time in that club. And in addition to DECA, we have mock trial at the school, which me and Caroline have been involved in for a few years now, which is another great club that kind of allows you to experiment with things that you would find yourself doing after your high school and college years and sort of discover who you want to be and what you want to do as a person.
All right, we've also got a couple more academically focused clubs. Our National Honor Society is a great part of our community, the high school. We've actually just restarted a writing center, which is a group of peer tutors that are mostly seniors, who are helping any kids during power block, which is a free block during the day, in the morning and after school. So, it's peer tutoring whenever kids need it, every day. And it's been really helpful. It's actually, it started when we were freshmen and we didn't see it for a couple of years, so we're really excited to be getting that back up again. And we even had some members of the National Honor Society who started up a STEM center because we do offer really rigorous AP science courses, and math gets tough for some kids. So, we now offer STEM tutoring whenever kids need it in a more informal setting. And we've found the tutors that kids are more likely to ask for help when it's from a friend or a tutor versus a formal adult. So, that's been a really successful initiative. We also have a lot of examples of student agency which have been popping up, especially in the social media age. So, our environmental club has been doing wonders as far as working with the climate movement. We actually just had a really successful climate strike. It was totally optional to participate. We saw a lot of student attendance, we had a number of really active motivated kids come up and speak about issues that, issues they felt were super pertinent about climate change and global warming, just getting the facts out there. And it was a really, really great thing to see so many students get involved and have the option to get involved with bigger world events that we're seeing on the news every day.
So, Hamilton Wenham has always sort of had a very prized theater program. This fall, I was in our rendition of Mamma Mia. And while theater isn't necessarily an academic club or a career-oriented club, it really does teach work ethic. Because as the musical ramps up and as you start to get closer and closer to opening night, the rehearsals get much, much longer. It really teaches you how to bear down, how to memorize lines, learn blocking, and how to really stay focused on a certain task. So, while I might not do theater in my professional life, I will definitely take the lessons I have learned from theater about work ethic, about, you know, memorization of certain things, and apply that to what I'm going to do in my professional career.
Hi, I'm a part of the new robotics club at the school. We had our rookie season last year, and it's been great. I like to think of it as a combination of a bunch of different interests because it's kind of like running a business in its, in of itself, where we're given a problem. We are with First Robotics, so they give us a video of a course, and then there are a couple of tasks to do on the course, and we have to figure out which ones to do, which ones will get us the most points. And then, not only that, but we have to find funding to do this. The Ed Fund got us started, but we have a marketing department within our club that goes to businesses and asks for donations and asks for sponsorships. And so, the robotics club has been really fun and really cool. We also do a lot of community outreach, which has been a lot of fun. We bring the robot to NHS tutor, NHS babysitting nights for the kids to play with. We've brought it to the Council on Aging, we've brought it to the Girl Scout troop. And so, just the community outreach with robotics has been really fun, and we're really excited to see how our second year goes and see where this club can lead in the future.
So, we've also recently started HW Gives Back at the school. It started a couple of years ago with our school-wide initiative to raise funds and help cure CMT4J, a rare disease that Dalia Duff unfortunately had. And we came together as a school community to do activities and challenges and fundraisers to help the cause. Now, more recently, we've broken it up on, by grade level. So, each grade is going to choose their own initiative. So far, the seniors have chosen cancer research and cancer fundraising, and the juniors have chosen the Wellspring House in Gloucester, which helps homelessness, English as a second language, and just people impoverished in the North Shore. And we've seen great success with that so far. We had Stuff the Cruiser during Spirit Week where we all brought in toys and then ran them into police cruisers for the Wellspring House, and then the Ice Bucket Challenge for ALS we did last year. And today, we had Cornerstone, the YMCA Cancer Support Program, come to our school to talk to us after the seniors helped support them with the recent fundraiser.
So, I am, so I'm Nora Sullivan-Horner, I am not a member of the student government at Hamilton Wenham High School, but I am a delegate on the regional student advisory council and also an elected member of the, delegate of the state student advisory council. So, essentially, each group, both regional and state, are groups of peer-elected students from five different regions across Massachusetts, the Northeast, the Southeast, Greater Boston, Central Mass, and Western Mass. And the purpose of these two groups is to give the students a voice, an essay in state decisions regarding educational policies or just student rights, student concerns. Last year, I think Will Globski had talked to you about vaping, which was a large project or focus that we had taken on that year because that is obviously a problem that, you know, students in high school face right now. We also have for the student, the state student advisory council, Massachusetts, I think, is the only state that has a full-voting member who is a student on the Massachusetts Board of Education. So, this really helps with student representation and giving a voice to the students who might not have other direct means of influencing the decisions that most directly affect them. Over my three years of being a part of this group, I've, I can really attest to the different skills that it cultivates, not just leadership, running for positions and taking initiative with sending out emails or spearheading projects and organization, but also teamwork, working in smaller work groups where each individual can contribute ideas or support the ideas of others, as well as individual initiative. Everyone leaves different meetings with kind of their own personal goal of what they want to do, so we can reconvene and most effectively work the next meeting. So, a couple of different examples of work groups, last year was one of the vaping work groups, but this year we have groups like Equity, Global Outreach, and the one that I'm the chairperson for is post-high school readiness. So, that is focusing on providing skills and resources to students who may, finishing high school. So, that could be going through the military, it could be directly to the workforce, it could be going to college. But no matter what path you choose to take in life after your secondary education, there are universal skills and resources that should be made available to you to help you thrive in whatever situation you move forward into life.
And then briefly, just to talk about sports at the high school, we obviously have a ton of options. We have a fairly young hockey program, we have football, baseball, basketball. We found great success with our football program. Ian Coffey was named Offensive Player of the Year this year by the Salem News, he was outstanding. We have a few D1 commits, Will Jones for baseball and Ginger Hubbard for rowing, which is very impressive. And something great about sports at the regional is that if, if our school doesn't offer sport, there are options to play it elsewhere. So, for example, Calvin Dalton wrestles with Salem, and he's won a state championship there now. And because our school doesn't offer wrestling as a sport, because we don't have enough participation, it doesn't limit him from participation, which I think is a great thing, and it really speaks to the options that were afforded at our school. And then, just to wrap up, so what is learning at HWRHS? So, looking at exploration as part of our learning process, here we have a couple pictures. So, on the left, we have a couple pictures from the Humanities Classroom, which is a very forward-thinking class. It's history and English combined into one long block with a class size of almost thirty, 35 kids last year. And it's really based on projects, writing, discussion, not the typical sit-down and take a test like you might see in an AP classroom here on the right, where it's almost a necessary evil, but the teachers teach to a curriculum and they focus on one specific thing, rather than, as in humanities, you can see they're doing a simulation of World War I that includes the historical events they learned about, incorporating them into the experience to get a more accurate perspective of what it was like to be in that time period.
So, I'm just going to talk briefly about failure and growth in high school, because I actually think that our high school handles like students' failure actually very well, which is great because like in high school, like you're going to fail tests, you're going to fail quizzes, you're going to get cut from teams, you're going to get cut from groups. And one of the things that I love about our high school is that when you fail, when you mess up, when you don't get into something that you want, there are so many options for you to move on and to get into something else. Like, for example, for me, I got cut from the basketball team my sophomore year, and I joined indoor track because I was just allowed to do that. Like, they weren't making any cuts, so I could just join the team. I could join late too, which was awesome. And I ended up having a great time and a great season there, and I continued it last year. And so, I just really enjoy how our school takes failure and like allows its students like to fail, but also creates a lot of outlets for them to get back up and, and move on and to try something new.
So, I would say discussion is one of the most important things at Hamilton Wenham Regional High School, especially in classes like humanities where it is a very ideas-based class. And I think as far as high school goes, the things that most students will take away is not necessarily the minor details of every single thing that happened in history or every single chemical on the periodic table, but the ideas that they formed, the ideas they presented, and how they came up with their worldview today. And I think you really start to form that in the classroom at a high school level. So, as far as discussion goes, I think this is really the wave of the future, as opposed to a traditional like sit-down, take a test, take notes. And not only do you get to present ideas to the teacher, you get to present ideas to your fellow classmates and see how they react to those.
All right, we also just wanted to briefly touch on challenge because we really pride ourselves, even though we love athletics and we love our extracurriculars, we as students are really proud of the fact that we go to an academically rigorous school, and I think we've all made it through one class. I know for me, it was AP Chem or Honors Chem that was really, really tough, and we made it through, and it's on our transcript, and we're proud of it. It's a hard, hard thing to take the classes that we do, but we end up being really successful. And I know talking to, we're seniors now, we talk to our seniors of last year, so freshmen in college, and we hear them saying, "Oh, I was totally ready to write that paper because Mr. Hickey in my AP English class totally prepared me." So, we're really proud to be taking these challenging courses, and we wanted to make sure that was part of your idea of our school system.
So, for 21st Century Tools, communication is huge. One app that we just started using last year for robotics is called Slack, and that's a huge tool that's been used in a whole bunch of companies now, because it's a, just a great form of communication for a company. And so, it was actually introduced to us by Mr. Pepler, who's one of our advisors for robotics, and he uses it in his actual company. He works with, I think, floppy disks, and he, he's a programmer for them, and so like he's in the like real world of technology, and he uses this app called Slack to communicate in the real world. And so, the fact that we're like having access to it now and being able to use these different apps to communicate has been really important in our career, and I think it'll be really helpful looking forward for when we're out of high school and communicating in the real world.
So, I want to talk a little bit about Google Classroom, which is a tool that I think almost every class uses at the regional. It's super helpful to have because a lot of teachers just post their assignments there, so you don't even have to necessarily write down all of your homework, it's right there for you in classroom. On days where you have snow days, the teacher can post an update saying like, "Hey, we moved this test," or "This assignment is now due this day." So, it's just really helpful for students to be able to communicate with their teachers and teachers to be able to communicate with their students.
We now be happy to take any questions that you guys have about anything we've mentioned. Thank you.
So, I'm going to assume that all of you have been on college tours recently and possibly even know where you're going. What did you hear from your college tours that was an important things that you did in high school? Like, what kind of things were you hearing that they were looking for?
I heard a lot of try everything. I was looking into a lot of interdisciplinary-focused universities and colleges. And a big selling point that a lot of schools have is look at all the clubs, look at all the extracurriculars, look at all the niche classes we have to offer. And talking to kids on my tours, I know I was looking at Northwestern, it's a big, big school. Kids were overwhelmed by how much there was to offer. I think it's scary to start anew at a new place, and it's scary to be posed with all those options. But we as students have been brought up to be involved in a million different things and to love, love, love the clubs and the extracurriculars and the classes that we take. So, moving forward into college, I'm really excited to try everything, to try new things as well as pursue things like mock trial and student government as I move forward.
Then one more thing that I thought was emphasized that we've done very well in the high school is cooperation, because at a lot of colleges I toured, they said that the homework you'll receive and the studying you have to do, it's impossible to do it alone. You have to be able to use your classmates as resources to work together, which I think is something that at Hamilton Wenham, we do very well and is highly emphasized. It's really hard to be successful without the help of your classmates, and I think that's a good way to prepare you for the real world where it's really hard to just put your nose down solo and just be successful.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I know, good luck to those that are waiting to hear acceptances. And Tom Kane, congratulations on Harvard class of 2024, maybe? Congratulations.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Thank you guys so much for having us.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you, congratulations.
They're so energetic, optimistic.
The world is going to be okay.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to new business, we have two citizens from Hamilton who have graciously come forward to fill the empty seat on our school committee. Excuse me, how do we want to, Michelle, do you want to run this, or?
Yeah, that's fine. I would, just, I'd like to thank Nancy Girardi and Ty Pijma.
Prima.
Prima, sorry, Prima, for submitting letters of interest. The school committee is a heavy load, a heavy task, but it's much needed, and we really appreciate you two stepping forward for the interim position. Because of our bylaws, I believe, we do have our selectmen from Hamilton here, and thank you so much for taking time this evening to come here. And we will appoint together the seat that was vacated in November. So, I think how we will run it is I will ask Nancy and Ty to come forward to the table. You will not be, this isn't the Coliseum, we are not, you know, going to be having the lions come out, no lions. But I-
We're generals, not lions.
Exactly, thank goodness. I think if we, in our packet, and it is posted online, we do have your letters of interest, and again, so thank you. If each of you, and I'll have Nancy go first, if you could just give us a brief overview of who you are and why you decided to put your, submit your letter of interest, that would be great. So, yes, yeah, that works.
Sure, is this okay talking? Nancy Girardi, I live down at 140 Highland Street. I've lived there since 1994, so I bought when I was 14. And my children came through the Hamilton Wenham Regional School System. My oldest daughter is a special ed teacher here at the high school. Daughter number two works down at the Weathervein, Natalie Mays, you might know her. And daughter number three, with a 20-year age difference, is in 6th grade at the middle school. Don't do that. And I, we moved here, just like Ty, for the school system. It really has an outstanding reputation. At the time I moved in here, my husband was a school teacher, and I worked at the DA's office, and so we did a little cross-section of safe communities and good schools, and we landed in Hamilton. So, I'm very thankful for the education that my children received and are receiving. They went on to, obviously she's a teacher, so she did very well. And I saw the vacancy, and I read it, and I thought about it, and I asked the daughter, who's a teacher, "How embarrassing would it be if I was on the school committee?" She doesn't talk to me anymore, no. So, I asked her, and then I missed the deadline. So, I said, "Well, then, it just wasn't meant to be." And then, when I saw it repost, I thought, "That's a sign." So, I mean, I have the skill set, I have the interest, the desire, and this is an opportunity to step up and share with the community that I moved here for with some of the skills I have to help the school system.
Great, thank you, Nancy. Ty?
Well, I'll say, I also missed the deadline. And I think in the same ways, I, my wife and I and my seven-year-old moved here maybe two years ago, also for the school system. We live, we lived in Salem, and I'm sure, as everyone knows, the Hamilton Wenham School System really is top-notch for the North Shore, and we, and we like it out here. And I've been saying to my wife, and I know for myself, I've been looking for more opportunity to be more involved with the school and more involved with my son and his education. You know, I think school is, and education is probably the most important thing for our, my son, but also kind of young people. I'm a social worker by trade and have worked for the Department of Children and Families for close to, oh, more than 21 years now, I should say, so just dated myself, but, so, and I, I'm a social work supervisor there. I'm also a therapist, and we just learned that I also teach a class at Salem State. And so, you know, school is really important to me, and, you know, I think the holding mental health part of school and the emotional support part of school is really important. And in some ways, that's what these young people just said, and I hope I can bring some of that.
Thank you. This is on me, I did not submit the questions in time to be on the agenda, so I would think we would have to, and everyone has, the school committee has the questions in their packet. And if I could have someone make a motion to approve the questions, and then perhaps we can ask. And I also believe the Board of Selectmen would also like to add some questions too. So, it's on page one. If everyone's okay with that? If there are additional questions people want to ask, are we going to pre-approve them, or? I don't know, I, I'm just wondering in the essence of time, to be respectful, everyone's time, the four questions that are here, and if, should we approve the selectmen's questions if it's from the, I believe the three of you have approved the questions amongst yourselves?
Any questions?
We're okay with our questions.
You're okay, okay, super. Are we okay with their questions, although we don't know, not knowing them, or since it is a joint appointment?
I think if, if we're okay with them, we'll keep it in the four corners, so if the committee's okay with that, we'll, we'll do the same.
Okay. All right, could someone make a motion then, or?
We can, and then the school committee can ask questions too, right?
These four questions here are-
More than these? What if we want to know more? I mean, I just, I've never been this, used this format, so I'm just curious, and I hadn't seen them before just now.
Mm-hmm, right.
So, I mean, if we have other questions, I mean, if we're going to appoint, I think we should be able to ask questions too, if we have them.
Okay. Is everyone in agreement with that? Can, in fairness of people's time, can we then limit the questions to four from the school committee? Is that reasonable? And I don't, if other people-
I think we should see how long-
I think we should see how long it's running. I agree with you that we don't want this to last an hour.
Correct, yeah. But we want to do proper vetting and questions.
I think four questions, four questions isn't enough, but it just depends on, I think if we have questions at the end, we should be able to ask them just to make sure we've properly vetted.
Yep, that makes sense. Okay. All right, so should I make the motion? Or?
That we'd ask these, is that what you're saying?
This and then additional questions from board members. Yes, sure. Okay, because I am, okay. I make a motion that the Hamilton Wenton School Committee grants the questions, allows the questions to be asked that are in the packet and then additional questions to be asked by members at the end of the four questions being read.
Second?
All in favor? Great.
All in favor.
Okay, that's great. I think what we'll do is I'll ask the first question to Nancy and then Ty and then we'll rotate, so then Ty gets the first question next. So Nancy, this is a three-part question. In your opinion, what is the district doing well? What are its challenges and how would you improve upon them or improve them?
How is the district doing well? The students who just spoke now are a good example of the wonderful students that come out of the school system. What are they, so that's what they were doing well. The second part was what do you?
What are the challenges?
What are challenges? Challenges are always going to be time and money for most things. I did have an opportunity to sit down with the superintendent this week and talk with her and I told a story of how when I was growing up, don't say anything, when I was growing up, there was a home economics class and I thought it was wonderful. And when my second daughter went through the school system, I believed there was home economics and now there isn't. But it isn't just how to, I don't know, like run a home or something. They, the teacher actually gave us a recipe that served eight and told us to break it down to serve two and to integrate math into it and measurements and, and it was just so encompassing. And I was told that that was something that, you know what, so that's what could, that would be a challenge, is how to set something up like that and to what you could do better. I think having those programs, and that's an example of it, all the things that go besides the reading, writing and arithmetic are all the things that make you a well-rounded adult, sports and activities. And the challenge is always going to be how much time do they have and, and the money to have the programs.
Thank you. Okay, Ty, the question again is what is the district doing well? And what are its challenges and how would you improve or any suggestions to improve? I know it's a broad question, it's tough.
Sure. So I guess I can speak to my son's experience so far and he, he was, is someone that is very shy and takes a lot to get him to talk with people and kind of be part of a group. And he really loves school. And I think it's to our surprise in some ways, his teachers have been, been really amazing. And, you know, he, you know, a kid likes school because he loves coming and gets really bent out of shape when there's snow days, which I'm looking at him like, what are you doing? But he loves his teachers, the, you know, his teachers communicate with us really well. He has some particular challenges that I think for a classroom can be hard, but he gets individualized attention. And in some ways, I understand or I guess that's part of why we're here, knowing that despite maybe some difficulties, he's, he's, will do well and feels very supported. And that's not an easy thing to do for, for a school system, I think. I was saying to someone recently, not just in terms of schools, but in, in terms of agencies and kind of larger systems, you know, the systems and schools and larger companies show their values by what they fund. Right? And, and in some ways, you see where people's values are by what's important and what actually gets funded. And I see things like special education and I hope mental health support as we, as I get to know kind of the school system better and academic support for teachers. You know, teaching's a hard job, like you all know. And the more support we give teachers, the more they can support our kids.
Great, thank you. As you know, the school committee has started the process of hiring a permanent superintendent. And if you are appointed, you will be part of that process. What characteristics do you think the school committee should be looking for in a permanent superintendent? Or your first, I?
I'm imagining impressive executive management skills are, are going to be a really important part to kind of being able to manage a large system, a lot of people are pretty, I'm imagining a pretty complicated funding system going on, which, you know, I'm sure is more complicated than I realize or any of us maybe realize. And I think an ability to bring people together, you know, and I, and I guess maybe some of the questions I would ask is a little of what I just said. You know, we want to see what your values are and part of that is we want to see what you're going to fund.
Thank you. And Nancy, do you want me to repeat the question or?
Please.
Okay, so as, if you are appointed, you will be part of the search committee or selecting the next superintendent. What characteristics do you think the superintendent should possess that is our next permanent superintendent?
Well, I actually went through the DESI licensure for superintendent and I hold that license in a pending status, so I know the requirements and some of the tests that they require when you take it. And a lot of it is on student focus, obviously. But I see the role of a superintendent is hiring, the staffing, the management, the overall culture. That's what they bring to the table. Of course, we want them to focus on the children's wellbeing, but the teachers, the backbone, the, the staff, is very important to keep motivated, to let them feel respected. At a local community college that I work at, there was just a vote and no confidence in the administration and there was an overall, the morale was very low. And I don't know what this, what the administration could have done differently, but whatever they did, the morale was low. And I think keeping the, hiring the correct staff, keeping them well-trained and motivated and focused and facing the same direction, that would be the type of personality that I think would excel in any administrative, but especially one that you're taking our most precious thing, our children, so you're under more of a microscope. I think that would be the type of personality that would excel in a superintendent position for the school system.
Thank you. The next question is directed to you, Nancy first. Is there any particular area of interest or strength where you feel you could offer a level, level of expertise to the board?
So, besides being licensed as a superintendent, I'm also licensed as a school business manager. I worked at Masconomet on their school budget and I was advisory for the Hamilton, the Hamilton Selectmen on the Finance Advisory Board. I'm very, very comfortable with working with budgets, school budgets. And I also have a background, licensed as an attorney, I have a background in the law and a lot of the things you do have legal restrictions or grants. So I think what I would bring to it is that formal training, but my personality is, I question why all the time when someone says we have to do this. I don't, I ask a lot of questions, but the same question only once. I ask, why are we doing this? What, what authority do we have? What's the immediacy? What are going to be the results before a decision is made? So I think that inquisitive personality is what I would bring to it besides the formal education and the background.
Great, thank you. And Ty, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yeah, could you?
Yes. Is there any particular area of interest or strength where you feel you could offer a level of expertise to the board?
So I am a clinical social worker by training and have always been involved and very interested in mental health issues, both on a more severe scale and kind of more minor. And have also am a supervisor at the Department of Children and Families where I've been for more than 20 years. And am also, you know, comfortable working within systems and managing competing systems. You know, we do a lot of work with the court systems, the school systems, probation. And I, and I think that it takes some, I don't know, some strength to be able to bring people together that maybe don't see eye to eye and facilitate a conversation. And in some ways, that's what social workers do.
Great, thank you. And Ty, this is to you. This is an interim position. Would you have any interest in running in, or taking out papers to run in April?
I would. You know, my son is only in first grade and I'm here and like I, like I was saying earlier, I'm very interested in being more involved with the school system.
And Nancy?
There was a vacancy that I thought I could bring some, something to the table to help during this interim period. At this moment, no, I do not think I would be filling the vacancy. I'd leave that up to the sentience entry to decide.
Thank you. And that's all the questions I have. If any other school committee member has a question, they could, feel free to ask.
I guess this is to you Nancy. I, I understand you have, is it temporary or pending license with, for superintendent? Just was wondering why you're not using your license or going forward with that right now, just was curious.
The, the, so there was a period that I had some time, I owned my own law practice and I, there's, there was an opportunity to get licensed as a superintendent, which was a fairly easy process. I don't mean to, that didn't sound nice, but the, the school business manager is actually where I was interested because I am interested in numbers, I have a background in accounting. Actually, at the time that I got my bachelor's degree from Salem State University, I had taken every accounting course the university had to offer, including graduate, so 27 beyond a, a bachelor's. I really wanted the business manager and that's harder to get. You have to do an internship and, and it's a lot to be, so in the process of getting the business manager's license, I just completed the paperwork for the superintendent's license. But, you know, all those skills that you learn in school, they're another tool in your belt. And I went down a different path, but I, it's all in pending status because I haven't held that position before. So.
I'm just curious, because it was very interesting to see that, which, you know, is a great asset. I just was wondering why you haven't, you know, used.
No wasted, very interesting, the whole knowledge, actually. There was the business manager here and I'm going to have trouble with his last name, it began with an S. He was before Jeffrey Sands.
Zemanowski, Peter Zemanowski.
Yeah, and he went on to Andover. He's the person who, I did the internship, so I worked in Andover or volunteered, however you want to, internships unpaid in, in Andover for, for a year. And then he submits paperwork and that's how you become a, a business manager. Yeah, he was very nice. So I had met him through conversations or whatever, my children being in the school system. So I just never used it, but it's never wasted. I'm here now.
No, it was just a very interesting aspect to your resume, so.
I know, it's a little disjointed, but it all flows somehow.
Are there any other board members that have questions? Then I would ask the board of selectmen if you'd like to ask some questions.
Yes, thank you. I'm Darcy Dale from the Hamilton Board of Selectmen. And I, I had heard that the last administration had laid off our only full-time child psychiatrist. And I was, I also know that the district is trying to keep as many IEP students in-house. It's an initiative to try to, you know, keep everybody here as opposed to sending them out. How does removing the psychiatry, child psychiatrist, will that affect that initiative? And do you think that would have, how can we, it just doesn't seem proper that we would remove the child psychiatrist, the only full-time one that we had. So I didn't know, how do you two feel about that? Ty?
I guess from, from my perspective, any child, mental health people in psychiatry, social workers, psychologists that school systems have are a real asset. You know, kids, you know, are often in crisis. You know, I sometimes think and we all know that schools are sometimes the real safe place for kids and can, consistent in ways that maybe other places aren't. And in some ways, I think some IEPs demand mental health support. And psychiatry is obviously a specialty that, you know, systems either do or do not have access to. So, you know, I imagine it's relatively problematic for psychiatry, for a system psychiatrist to be removed. I would guess teachers feel that way too.
I wouldn't know the previous administration's motives. I'm gonna think that it had to do with money and it's unfortunate, but really kudos has to be given to both selectmen because you'd do the same thing. I was on that advisory board and the school committee. There's only so much in resources and it has to be handled and sometimes there's no perfect solution, but there's the best out of two bad choices. I'm going to have to believe that that's what that was, that there was something that the school was able to maintain by having that cut, as unfortunate as it is. That's, that's the only way I could explain something like that because certainly it's a very necessary position, so without knowing more of the background, I'm going to assume that's the motive.
Thank you.
I'm Rosie Kennedy from the Hamilton Board of Selectmen. So my question ties in a little bit with Darcy. So these days, the school is, schools are responsible for development of academic status, social status and the emotional needs of kids. And knowing that there are just ever-present financial pressures, off the top of your heads, what resources would you tap into to provide some support to students that wouldn't necessarily encompass using your limited finances?
You know, I was just in a school this past week in Lowell and it's a charter school there and this, this school seems amazing. And one of the things that they were explaining to me, I was, as I was visiting an intern, is they're connected to a mental health clinic in Lowell and they sit people in the school. And I asked the same question you just did, how do you guys pay for that? Because it seems like a fortune. And they have figured out a way to bill insurance and have people sit in the school. And I, and I think the, the benefit for them is that kids are getting mental health support. And even if you could get it outside of school, I think we know it's more consistent when you're in school. I think there was a struggle with pulling kids out of academic classes and I think there's always going to be a challenge, but they figured out how to get kids help without paying for it in, in a real direct way. And it seemed to be working.
So your question was what, what supplemental services could be had without a string of financial resources?
Sort of a thinking outside the box. We always think, let's just put more money into this and this and this. And the reality is we have finite resources. And so, and so my question is, just thinking about it, how, what kind of resources would you tap into for a child's academic, social, emotional needs that wouldn't necessarily cost more taxpayer dollars?
Sure. Well, I myself work at the Massachusetts Small Business Development Center where former business owners can advise young entrepreneurs, students, alum, anybody who wants to come to the Massachusetts Small Business Development Center. At Salem State, it's, it's a grant housed between the SBA, the Small Business Administration, and the Massachusetts Office of Business Development with the matching funds. And could we come in and teach classes on business development? Absolutely. We go to tech schools, they have a thing called Strand Five where you teach these entrepreneurial classes because they'll be plumbers, electricians, beauticians. because they'll be plumbers, electricians, beauticians, hairdressers. They're gonna own their own business. And so, that's free. I also was, a few years ago, appointed chief justice to the ABA moot court competition. Very cool. People come from top-notch universities all over the country to compete in a, a trial. And it was an appeals trial, and I was the chief justice, so. And that is absolutely free. The state has lots of resources, and it's paid for with your tax money already. So tap into that, bring them here, have them work. The students are gonna be there at some point. Being in school is actually finite. They're gonna graduate, they're gonna go out there. There are resources out there available to them. Let it be known, let these different state agencies that offer these services come in and teach them. At the tech school, what I suggested, and I don't know if it will be accepted at one of them, was a brown bag, where you bring your lunch, show up on a Saturday, we'll walk you through a marketing plan. You know, the students sit there, they can roll out ideas. To be honest, I learned more because I know no- nothing about social media. I say Bing and Ping all wrong, apparently. And that, we sit down in a round, and we have a discussion, a problem-solving discussion, that real businesses have in, in the current marketplace. It, it's fantastic. But these are res- that would be completely free for you to offer to students here. And they will be there. They will be out in the marketplace someday, so you might as well prepare them for that angle with the free resources.
Thank you.
One last question. Sean Farrell, Hamilton Board of Selectmen. First, thank you both for applying and volunteering your time and efforts and et cetera. So with declining student population, our school budget still rising, how will you work to gain knowledge of town government needs that may conflict with the school budget? I ask this because Wyndham is looking at a budget shortfall and possible override, and Hamilton oftentimes asks the school committee for a level services budget because of increasing needs within town government and conflicting school budget. So kind of basis of the question is, how will you work with the local governments? What knowledge will you gain from them? And how will that affect you in the budgeting process when it comes down to kind of brass tacks of crunching numbers? To know when we have a joint meeting coming up for budgets, and the towns say, we can't pay that, how, how will we rectify that and build a consensus? Because what we all don't want is a failed budget.
So I am, I am gonna imagine that the, the budget is much more complicated than I can even think about. The only way that I can see myself learning about the budget in the town is by sitting and listening, to, to really be able to learn. The balancing the budget, I can imagine, is really hard. And I think it's gonna come down to, really, like I said earlier, we have to decide what, as a town, where our values are. And my hope is that it's within the school system.
This has been said a few times, but resources are finite, cuts are hard, but with any negotiation, if both parties leave the table a little bit injured, not wounded, a little bit injured, then it's probably the best that you could do. And so it's gonna have to be a give-give type of scenario for any budget to work. The declining enrollment, you know, so when you start a budget, the first thing you do is put in any of your legal obligations. So all the T, all the contracts go in. They're contracts. You're held to them. Leases, then you do utilities, then you do things on top of it. So when something has to give, it's gonna be from one of those areas, which might be the extracurricular. You know, you have obligations. So, you know, just like in your, your house, you'd give up going out to dinner before you'd not make a car payment. There, there's obligations to it. But when you sit down at the table, the consensus can be, we're each gonna take a little bit of the pain and, and be satisfied that you did a good job doing that.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. So the next part of the process, I, it's up to you. You can sit in the gallery, in the audience, and listen to us debate which of you would be the better candidate. Or you're free to go home and watch it on TV. It's completely up to you. But this part of the process now, it's either you can stay or go. So it's up to you completely. But thank you so much for coming this evening and sharing your thoughts with us. We too, as, as everyone has said, Sean and the board selectmen and our, and the school committee, thank you so much for showing interest. Voluntarism is what makes our communities great. So we really appreciate your showing up. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add just one thing?
Yes.
All right. Whoever the committee and us choose tonight, please go visit the town clerk, swear yourself innocent as possible, so you can get right to work.
Yes, yeah, because there are, there's the Ethics Commission, as well as some other statewide mandates that you need to follow. And after that happens, then our first meeting will be after the New Year.
And there's gonna be training in Revere in early January that you'll need to go to, so.
Yes, it's another, that is, it's, it's great. But it's a full-day training session for school committees.
On a weekend.
On a weekend.
And, and just to let you know, Town Hall will be closed from about 12 to 3 tomorrow. So, Christmas party.
Oh, oh, oh.
So please do come before or after, or come to the party.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you both.
At this point, do we wanna open the table for discussion, or, you know, walk through a roll call vote?
Yes, I mean, if there's anyone that has been through this process before, if they could shed some light on.
The two times I've been through, we basically just roll called. I don't remember really there being much deliberation.
Well, there was when we appointed Jean.
We did have discussion.
Because there were multiple candidates, and we had discussion and then narrowed it down to a smaller pool. There's not that need.
We've got a small pool right now, right?
You get to the smaller pool, you're done. But yeah, I mean, you can make a motion, or we could discuss it, or we-
I mean, people, I think in the past, we've had discussion where everybody can kind of voice opinion, you know, and just, you know, to get what they, their thoughts are for each candidate, you know? And then we can, then come to a vote from there, just to make it more of a, it's not like we're, like a long deliberation, but at least get some information out or thoughts, you know? We can communicate with one another. Sorry, I'm not trying to ignore you guys.
So I, so I recall only a vote by the members to narrow it down to three candidates from the original seven. And then from the three, you guys chose one of the three. So there, there actually was no deliberation when I was appointed. So you have a binary choice here.
The process before that, we did have.
Yeah. I mean, ultimately, we can decide what we wanna do, right? But we have a binary choice. We can go around and say, and see if there's a majority, you know, that's a suggestion. If there's a candidate that receives the most votes, that would be a simple, efficient way to doing it, frankly.
I agree with that. Your thoughts over there?
I think that's fine.
And I believe it does need to be a roll call. Am I correct?
Yes.
So I guess we'll start with Jean. Wanna just pick a candidate?
Nancy Girardi.
Mr. Prima.
Mr. Ty Prizma.
Mr. Prizma.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Prizma.
Mr. Ty Prima.
Nancy Girardi.
Nancy Girardi.
And I would vote for Ty Prizma as well.
So should we have a motion?
Sure.
Or is that, or is that the motion?
I think we should probably have a motion to approve, a motion to-
Okay.
Excuse me?
To approve Ty Prizma.
Yep. Do you wanna do that? Or, do you wanna do that?
Sure. I make a motion that the Hamilton Wyndham School Committee, as well as the Hamilton Board of Selectmen, appoint Mr. Ty Prizma.
Oh.
As, sorry.
That's okay. We can't spell his name or say it either, so.
It's balls of common spelling.
As the interim school committee member for the remaining balance of the 2019-2020 term. All in favor?
Second.
Second, sorry.
All in favor? Great.
Thank you very much.
Opposed? Everybody's unanimous?
No, well, it was a majority. Yeah, that would be opposed, yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna go with the majority.
Great. They're so easy. Thank you so much. So if you could make your way over to Town Hall tomorrow.
Thank you, Nancy.
We are-
Thank you guys for coming.
You're welcome.
Going over the, our preliminary budget tonight, where you're welcome to sort of sit in at that, you know, sort of the intro level. I, I just, letting you know. And then, I, you know, we won't be making any motions on it tonight, but it might be a good sort of precursor to what you're about to get into.
Step in.
But just in closing, thank you to the board of selectmen for showing up and working jointly with us.
And to Nancy, we should thank.
Yes, and Nancy, of course. Yes. Again, as I said, it's all about volunteerism and, and thank Nancy and Ty.
It was really an honor to be included in the process. Thank you. It was a great learning experience for, for me, and I'm sure for, for my colleagues as well. And at this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn this portion of the Hamilton Board of Selectmen meeting.
I make a motion that we adjourn. This portion of the school committee meeting, joint committee.
You second. Because she made the motion.
Second.
You second. Say second.
Oh, second.
Perfect.
I thought you were the chair, looking for a motion.
Now you say all in favor.
All in favor?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.
And the school committee will take a brief five-minute recess.
Oh, we are? Okay.[1311.73]
So, next up, let's see where we are.
David?
Yep.
We have guests here, which includes some of our esteemed leadership. And they are on the agenda twice, 5D, and then also again at 6A. Is it possible we could move those up so that we can allow them to leave?
Thank you. We're just going to do that.
Great, let's do that. So, I, whatever, that would be a motion to amend the agenda.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great.
Do you want to do a second amendment?
Yeah, and while we're getting ready for them, we also have another guest here, which is Dorothy Presser. Due to our cancellations last night due to the weather, she's come to give us an update on our process for superintendent search. So after our esteemed leaders, if we could also move up, this is 5, 5H.
And so you, sorry, so you want to move the boys 5B and 5C down below that?
Basically, yes.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right.
So while our principals are getting ready, I just wanted to thank both Principal Eric Tracy and Assistant Principal Brian Menegodi for coming tonight to review the 2020-2021 course catalog. They'll highlight a few changes in what we're planning to offer this year and then entertain any questions that the school committee might have about the 2021 course catalog. And then we'll follow right in with the class size analysis that is a carryover from last meeting agenda. So with that, Brian?
All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for hosting us tonight. I'm gonna talk quickly about the draft course catalog for the 2020-2021 school year. You should have received a full copy of the draft and your materials. And I'll just highlight briefly the structure. The beginning of the course catalog talks a lot about course selection, scheduling, and some academic planning so that when students start to think about their course selections for the following year, they can keep in mind some of the long-term considerations as they move up through the high school. The bulk of the course catalog, though, are the course descriptions. And what we're here tonight to do really is to highlight some new courses that we're going to offer next year, but also some courses that we are not going to be offering. New courses for 2020-2021 that were not offered or that are not offered currently this year, biotechnology in the Science Department, temporary history, and current American conflicts in the Social Studies Department. We now will have our Mandarin IV students moving into Mandarin V next year. Grade 10 Wellness will become our required sophomore physical education course. And an elective in the Health and Wellness Department will be Environmental Leadership. Those are the new courses that we're going to be offering for next year. Just a quick point I want to make. Contemporary History and Current American Conflicts were offered in 1819. What the Social Studies Department likes to do are offer electives in alternating years. And the thought process behind this is to give kids choice, but to give them measured choice. Because what can happen sometimes if you offer too many electives? And when kids sign up, the signups wind up all over the place. And it's really not very easy to know which electives you should run. So if we offer a limited number of electives, but the students know that the following year, something that they may want to take, will be offered, it helps us get kids into the courses that they would like. Those are the new courses for next year. Courses that we do not plan on offering next year. Contemporary World Literature in the English Department, Real History, Law and Society in the Social Studies Department, and Experimental Design, Design, Program, and Create Digital Art, and Web Page Design in the Fine Arts Department. Contemporary, or excuse me, not Contemporary World Literature. That class in the English Department has not run for several years. And we just have never had more than two or three kids sign up for it at any given time. So we're going to discontinue that in the course catalog. But in the Social Studies Department, Real History and Law and Society are currently running this year. They're very highly subscribed. But this coming year, 2020-21, we will not offer them. Instead, offer the electives that I just spoke of. And the three fine arts electives that are named there have not run for a number of years just due to low course signups. So that is our synopsis of courses that are new for next year and also ones that have been in our catalog that we do not plan to include in our course offerings for next year. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Brian, I heard that Honors Mandarin might be offered coming soon. Is that true?
We're considering what to do with that. You know, the Mandarin program being new, we're still trying to see how kids shake out in that, what their experience is like. The one thing I can say about Mandarin is it's difficult to make it easy, I guess. So when a college sees the word Mandarin on a transcript, they know that that is a difficult course just because of the way Mandarin is classified by the American Council of Teachers of Foreign Language has put that at their highest class, their most difficult language to learn.
So this may or may not fall into this box of questions, but it's been my experience that if you take, not me personally, but if a student takes any science course, it works as meeting their requirements. If they take any math course, it works for meeting their requirements. However, in social studies, the classes are dictated that they must be freshman, sophomore, and junior social studies. I'm just curious as to how these electives are offered, but then are not allowed to be applied to social studies credits.
Yeah, that's a good question. In the Science Department, we require our freshmen to take Biology, and sophomores take Chemistry. After that, kids can spread out quite a bit. For example, our juniors may choose to take AP Bio, AP Chemistry. They could take AP Physics. They could take a regular physics course. They could take a net. They have a lot of places they can go for science.
Right.
You know, in social studies, there is a required sequence all the way up through junior year. So, and they have a three-year requirement. So maybe that's the question that you're really asking.
That is the question. Why is there no choice?
Yeah.
Why is there choice in other disciplines, but not in social studies?
That's something that we could certainly speak about, I think, internally in the school. You know, from a scheduling perspective, I think having some control like that makes, or it helps get kids into courses that they will need. Offering choice is important, but we need to offer controlled choice because sometimes telling kids that, you know, you could do a million different things to fulfill your social studies requirement does actually make it more difficult to get them into some of those courses. Students, as they get older, especially as they approach their junior and senior year, do have more room in their schedules to be able to take some of these electives that the different departments offer.
Yeah, it just, and then what's the story with AP US History? It wasn't offered this year.
We offered it, but it did not run due to low signups. So it's still in the course catalog. And if there are enough kids to run a section or two of it, it will run.
What is the minimum to run it?
And how is that determined? Because that is one of those courses, like you can really only take it as a senior. So it's not like you can take it again next year because of all of the prerequisites.
Yeah. So it has been a senior course for a number of years. And in other school systems, I've seen it offered as a, that's what juniors take, but it just depends upon the sequence of courses. You know, what is the minimum number we would, you know, use? In the past, we've been given a guideline of, you know, 14 students to really run something. But that's not always what we can go by because sometimes we have to make a choice between, are we gonna run this course? But if you run a section of something, it has to come from someplace else. So we gotta look at the other offerings and requests that students have made, you know, and figure out what the best course of action. You know, with AP, something like AP US History, they can take it through VHS. So we know that we have that as a place for students who do want to take it. They could enroll through that mechanism.
Have you been successful? Has anybody taken it really, VHS, the AP History? Because that seems like it would be pretty difficult to take that without really the teacher, classroom where they can really ask questions, if they need help, whatnot.
Yes, it's definitely a different experience. Any online course is gonna be, you know, much different than being in the classroom with the adults and the other students. I think that's a course that a student could navigate successfully, especially if they're seniors. And it's a good opportunity for students to experience online learning because they're gonna have to do that at some point. Where VHS courses become a little bit more difficult, obviously, in the lab sciences because you can't replicate what you would be doing in the laboratory, really, in the virtual world. So AP US History is probably a little bit more doable. But, you know, I would agree that, you know, you're giving up something. But at the same time, if it's what your schedule requires or if we just can't offer it as a school, it is an alternate option for them.
And then?
Are these offerings, the social study offerings in line with the new, no? New framework?
Not yet, no. They're working on that right now. So I would expect to be back here maybe next year or the year after talking about new social studies courses that align with updated curriculum frameworks and the new civics requirement that's coming out.
And then several years ago, we got rid of our portfolio. And we had put in like a senior project as a possible way, like an alternate thing. How does someone sign up for that?
That is done second semester of their senior year. And it's really based upon student interest. So they would meet with their guidance counselor. And the give back is that students will, they'll not be attending their courses during fourth quarter and just be working on their internship. So it's really driven by student interest. And in any given year, we may have eight to 10 students who choose that option. And it's been a great experience for those who do that. And we certainly would like to encourage more just because they've been in school for 11, 12 years. And I'm not quite sure why their last quarter has to look like all the other ones have. So, you know, I always encourage more kids to do that.
So do they get credit for that?
They do, yes.
So is that a course that's in the course catalog?
Yes, it is, yeah.
And where is that?
The very end where it says diversified learning opportunities.
Oh, so it's just under the like?
Yeah, it says internship.
Independent study type thing?
Correct, yeah.
All right, so I guess we are looking to, have we never done this before?
We haven't. Our policy, I believe, changed, so that's what happened. Would you like me to make a motion?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
I move that the Hamilton Wenam Regional School Committee adopt the Hamilton Wenam Regional High School 2020-2021 Course Catalog. The under-school committee policy, I-9000.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, six. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
So up next, we're going to do the class size analysis. Eric Tracy, Principal of the Hamilton Wenam Regional High School, is gonna lead us to this. I'm ready, Eric.
Just re-projecting here. Switching. So this class size report is something that we do annually for kind of our own look at what's happening across the major course areas, math science, social studies, English, foreign language, fine arts, health. To be able to give us an idea of what courses are running low, what courses dropped below our initial requests. For example, if a course request in July is 17 and because of adjustments in kids' schedules or kids moving around, it's suddenly 11, it gives us the opportunity to look and try to identify what happened, what kids changed to. We can use the history reports in Aspen to figure out where kids are moving. Sometimes kids will come in, especially in their senior year, and really say, I want to go to school for X. But I picked, I think I picked the wrong courses. And they'll make adjustments, and that may change some of the course selection. So our numbers constantly move. From the time we pull the initial report in April, after we have all the kids make their selections, our numbers will move around all the way up until about the second week that school has begun. Once the second week is done, we try to slow that down and get everybody in place. So you'll see on this report, the counts by department and some of the counts that we look at, I look at this in color. I have anything between one and 10 highlights for me in red automatically to say, hey, there's something you gotta look at. And then I can go back and look at our preliminary reports in April, our reports that Brian uses with the curriculum leaders in May to determine sections and what will run, and then make some comparisons and try and figure out adjustments and changes for next year. And that's one of the things, US History is a great example of this because some years, US History AP will have 18 students, 25 students. And it's much easier to run that course. We know over time by running these reports that there is some attrition. So before school starts or kids didn't finish the summer work for AP required, they'll dip out of that course, and our course numbers can go from 17 to 13. When they get down low, like last year, when you have nine kids sign up and no more, you know there's gonna be some attrition. It could be down to eight or seven or even less, depending on circumstances, what kids may want to do. They thought about the summer, what they want to do for senior year, and that tends to change. So we use these reports to analyze that data along the way because it moves so much. A number of the class sizes run, on average, between 17, 18, and 19. So approximately 18 average course size. It's a little bit misleading in some cases because we do have some of these courses that are team taught. Some of these courses are serviced by a teacher's assistant or a special ed teacher at the same time. So that's not really reflected in here, which may, you know, would probably adjust the numbers. But these are just solid numbers based on a single teacher in our major classrooms. It doesn't count something like an academic support room for special ed because those numbers can range from, as we know, three to six, sometimes eight, depending on the situation. So they tend to be much lower than the rest of the content areas. Are there specific questions you have about this report?
I do. I was just curious. Was wondering how we can align our class sizes with our policy on class size? Because there's a couple of classes that went way over the class size policy.
Sure. So this is a long process. We start in April. We run our basic numbers. We meet with our department heads. And I'll use, I think the example you brought up last time was talking about the math classes.
Yeah, there's two of them.
For example, the Algebra II classes. We make decisions on what we want to run with our department heads and in this case, with the teacher who would have ended up with these classes. So we talk with the department heads, and they really say, you know, we want to get kids into, in this case, we want to get kids into programming. We don't run a programming course. So we really like to get the programming course up and running. We want to give it as an opportunity for our kids. And we understand we only have so many teachers in the department. So, you know, this is our choice. If we run programming, the offset is something else is gonna increase. In this case, it was that Algebra II. And Brian, myself, the department head, the teacher, each had a hand in saying, okay, what makes sense in the big scheme of things? And nine out of 10 times, we leave it to the department to make that decision unless it's way off base with kind of what we do at the high school. But we try to run as many courses as possible for kids. And sometimes that puts us into decision-making, you know, as outlined in your, in our policy, our own policies, like what are the things we look at? The numbers overall, the offerings, the teachers that we have, the certifications that we have. In math, everybody's certified in math, but they're not really an expert in every area. Some math teachers would have a difficult time teaching AP Calculus or Calculus. So we really look at all of the options that are available to us in the pursuit of trying to give kids as many options as possible. So we will always have class sizes that are above that range of 20 to 22 because you're looking with, you're looking at over 3,600 schedule options for each, for the kids with 47 teachers in the classroom, not all of them full-time. Those numbers don't just fall evenly because our kids have so many opportunities. Kids that take band, for instance, that gets locked into. Kids that take band, for instance, that gets locked into the A block or B block, depending on the year, because, excuse me, those teachers work at the middle school as well. So they start the day at the high school. That locks in a lot of kids' schedules right there. So all of a sudden, that block, nothing else can happen but band. So Brian's looking at offsets, he's got to say, all right, I know we're going to run two AP lit classes, so let's take one of those, it'll run during the band, it always tends to run that way, and let's force another one into a different spot, so those kids can have that opportunity. But that's causing a domino effect across the entire schedule. It's hard for kids to get every single course they want all the way through, harder per se, as they start to branch out during junior year. Junior year is, you know, there are plenty of options for kids junior year at the high school, and that really starts to clamp down the schedule. We also, we're looking at things that don't directly impact kids, like common planning time. Brian works with the department heads to find ways for teachers to come together at certain times during the day. That blocks out an entire period for a certain set of courses. So for example, C block could be blocked out completely for teachers that are teaching ninth and 10th grade English, because we want them to have similar times. So now that just pushed everything else from the English department out to the seven other, six other options. So there's a lot of moving parts. It'll never, ever fall exactly even. If you want to reduce the overall sizes, in our case, you would add more teachers. And that, I don't know if that's a real reality.
Well, what about department heads? Because I know that like AP Calc is, which is 31 kids, or even Algebra II, like maybe add a class for that, for the department head, just because 31 is just, you can almost divide that class in half and still have full classes that are two.
And again, it's a decision with, department heads moved to coaching model this year. They were given fewer classes, so that they could spend more time working the coaching model in the classrooms and working on that, the development of that, and really getting into classes, working with teachers, and trying to improve their instructional practices. So that, again, is a piece that we give up. If I had curriculum leader for their entire contracted amount, I could split that, you know, and maybe some other courses. Again, it's going to be based on who can teach which courses.
Yeah, I just know our class, because of our limited, because of how many kids we have in the high school, it's a very limited schedule. So it makes it hard to even get, when you're, even a junior year, to get, you know, like your first or second choice.
Yeah, and we also have a high number of kids, remember, our kids are pretty competitive, so we have a high number of kids taking those AP level courses. There's some competition there for that within our building compared to any other school. And overall, we look at those class sizes and we're like, okay, we got to 18 overall. We'll always have some in the 23, 24 range. There are some courses that can start out at 23 and end up at 16 before the second week of school's over, because kids all of a sudden make shifts or want to change their program, their selection, program selection, so. It's a, it is a gigantic puzzle. It takes months to figure out. We locked Brian away for a few days, so that nobody can bother him, but we do work with everybody. Every department head is involved from the time we get the preliminary numbers from the computer. And then our computer system looks at 100,000-plus options of our schedule. So 100,000 individual iterations of the schedule of what works best. And it'll deliver it back to us in different ways. And I forget how many scenarios that we ran this year, but there were probably 25 different scenarios that we ran each one of those, and it goes through these iterations to find what's the best fit for the most amount of kids. No computer program that we can find can do 100%. We're lucky if we get 85%. Brian, I think, hit 92? 90? I think it was 92% this year, and that's a first for what we had to offer. So the goal is to try and get as many opportunities and options available for kids. And we look differently at kids in AP courses. They tend to be more individually motivated, they tend to be able to work on their own, or as you heard some of our kids, they collaborate with their peers much better. And those options for us open up some doors for other kids and things that kids might want to take along the way. It's hard in a small school to give kids offerings, but I feel like we have to give kids as many options as possible to experience, to try, so that when they go to make that college decision, they can say, you know, I took a course in business, wasn't my thing. Or I took a course in art and, nope, I don't want to do that. So we're trying to really balance all of those things as we build the schedules. And there are some things, as Brian said, some things that we showed that just aren't running because of the way we cycle our classes. There'd be a bunch more courses that won't run, just because we won't have either the personnel or the place to put them. Even though kids may sign up, so you know, eight or nine kids may sign up for AP programming. If we ever ran it, it may not run. Art, AP art was one that ran when I first got here, when we had, you know, 600 and, I think we had 668 kids my first year here, and one of the things we ran was AP art, and that was, you know, a couple of years before me, and then it just kind of disappeared, went away. So some things come in cycles, cycles too with kids.
Can I just ask, what's the wear and tear on teachers that have 31, 26 to 31 kids?
Depends on the teachers?
Yeah.
We know where we can put larger kids. I mean, you know, for example, that go back to those two math classes, the discussion with the teacher is, here are the options. The teacher said, I can do this, and I know I also can run a course that I really like to teach. So there's an offset to that, where the courses that the teacher kind of said, yeah, I can take more kids, you know, and we have a talented group of teachers. Super talented group of teachers. And whether a teacher has 15 or 30, it's a long day. It's the same amount of planning, it's the same amount of work. You know, unfortunately, in some cases, if, say, an English class, you may find yourself correcting long hours into the night. There's a lot of wear and tear all across our schedule. And I mean, our kids are super, super into finding the most rigorous schedule possible. We have a gentleman here, and you look at his schedule, it's pretty rigorous when you start to look at, you know, what courses kids take along the way to get into your Harvards or your Northwestern or Tufts, and those are places our kids are going this year.
Thanks, yeah. Yeah, I would, I can figure out the initials here, so there's one teacher in the math department who seems to really be taking on a student load way beyond their peers, so, yeah. But I get that. So I'm just curious from our student rep as to how you feel about class size.
Yeah, I would say that from my perspective, I think being in a calculus class with 31 kids is worth having more choice in terms of electives in other classes. Like, it's not the end of the world, obviously, when you have 31 kids in a class, it might be harder to get a question in during teaching periods. But if that's what it takes to kind of have, we have so many options at our school, like incredible amount of electives, especially for a small school, that for me, it's a sacrifice I'm willing to make. Maybe for other students, it might not be what's best for them, but from my perspective, if I have one or two classes a year with 25-plus kids, I think I'm willing to accept that for, like, the many, many courses that we have offered to us.
And there are some courses we just can't run above certain numbers because of size?
Yeah, I was wondering that about some of these science classes, yeah.
Room sizes, science labs to safely run need to really be under 24. Even under 22 is, for me, I feel a little bit better, when fire is going, chemicals, and so we have, you know, we've trying to, we're trying to use the spaces that we have as wisely as we can. There are safety factors, there are just fit factors, trying to get, you know, a certain number of kids into a computer lab, for example, in our digital classes. We've been able to expand it, but we don't, we can't go any further, because it's just too tight with all the equipment and, you know, you've got cameras and you've got full-size computers, and then you, you know, you're bringing in all the editing stuff. So we try really hard to make the best use of the spaces that we have. I mean, we're in the cafeteria, you guys have been to the high school, we're in the cafeteria, we're in the hallways, we're using a conference room for some of our classes. There are a number of options, it's just, you know, more space is always, is always, we'll take it, if we can find it.
Any other questions?
So these are just really two reports that we use to look at some of the data and try to manage the numbers across the building.
No, it's great, I actually found the attrition part really interesting, the fact that, you know, just people signing up in the spring might not make it all the way to fall.
Yeah, Mandarin's a great example, it's a super hardcore, so it gets hard fast and kids drop out very quickly. So your Mandarin class of 17, all of a sudden, is at nine in a month, gone. It's really hard. And you know, you got to have that discussion with the student about, do you want to stay in there? Should you work hard? Or is this really ruining your school year? And that's an important piece, too. That social emotional is huge for us. We've made a lot of decisions based on trying to stabilize kids and make sure they still get to enjoy their experience.
I do think it's interesting that we have kindergarteners that are crammed in with way more students than many of these high schoolers, and they have a lot more independence. So I think that's something we need to kind of look at.
And I would agree, as a high school principal, I think our money is best spent at reducing the class sizes in the lower levels, purely because we can manage where we're at, the 18 across is pretty manageable. And our teachers are really strong. We have a solid, strong teaching staff at the high school, and our support staff is there, whether it's the guidance support, whether it's LICSW support, or whether it's special ed support, whatever way we need it, we've been super flexible at being able to get those pieces into the right places at the right time. And if we have to shift them halfway through the year, we shift them. So pretty nimble, and it's pretty, it makes our jobs a little bit easier that people are so flexible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And put this to Dorothy.
All right, now we're going to move the superintendent's.
Did Dorothy's things make it into our packet?
Dorothy, want to come up?
Did Dorothy's timelines make it into our packet, or no?
I don't think I know about Dorothy's timeline.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to find out, if they made it into our packet.
Yeah, I did see it somewhere.
Yeah, I emailed everybody, but I don't know if it made it into our packet.
Thank you.
I hope you don't feel like I'm the bad penny you can't get rid of at your meetings.
No, we would never think that.
We like you so much for paying you to be here. So thank you for coming out tonight.
So it's New England and weather happened this week, which kind of, so now we need to revise the timeline. There were a couple of focus groups canceled, so need to be rescheduled after the first of the year. Clearly, I can't report out on the focus groups that haven't happened yet. So we have to push things a week. I looked at the calendar and sort of figured out how we can revise the timeline, so that we get to the same endpoint. And if you look at this, there's a couple little things just to be aware of, if this is okay. There's going to be a couple times in January when I think I need to meet with you one week after the other. One would be a longer time that I'd need to spend with you, and the other relatively short, but there are two check-ins that I need to make. And then the other time, you know, we'll bump, we'll bump things, so that the application deadline is a week later than it was intended to be. It makes it during school vacation. I don't think that affects anybody at all. These are people who will probably spend school vacation week on their applications. So I don't think that will matter at all. It does mean that during the time period when you're working on, once the finalists are named, and you're looking at visiting their districts and they visiting here, there may be some overlap of, you know, candidate, you're going to candidate A's district while candidate B is here. But if, depending on how you do the interviews, sometimes school committees decide they want to interview each candidate on the day of their visit, sometimes they decide they want to do one night of interviewing all the finalists. Even if you decide you want to, or if you decide you want to interview the candidates on the day they're here, if you're at other districts, you would be back for that interview. And school committee members don't generally have much to do with the candidate on the day they're here. That's other people in the district that are managing that. So I don't see that as a problem. And this revised schedule gets you, again, to the same end date of a decision. So basically, that's, you know, I'm here to say, here's the revised timeline, is it okay? Should we go ahead with this?
So Dorothy, on the 15th, how long do you think that would, that item would take?
That's the longer list. So hopefully, I'll be able to get you the focus group and survey responses ahead of time, and it will come with some recommendations on the leadership, on the leadership profile. So if you're sort of ready to discuss that, I would say you're probably looking at about an hour of worth of discussion. If you're really prepared for it, it could be more streamlined.
Not the 15th, right? We're meeting the 18th.
No, we are meeting the 15th.
14th and 15th.
All right.
Three hours each, so that would make it a four-hour meeting.
What?
You'll be done by eight.
Yeah, but then we're supposed to talk, three-hour meeting and then another hour with Dorothy?
I mean, I picked the 15th because it's the day of the week that you meet. We can certainly look at bumping it.
We meet the 14th and 15th, and three-hour each meetings.
We're having budget meetings those days, so.
It's a budget meeting workshops. And it could run longer.
What are you doing on the 16th?
I mean, we had to go through this last spring also, right? There was just no way of getting around having to meet.
Yeah, I think we need to, I think we need to do it, but we, I don't. I'm not gonna, I mean, if we're supposed to be here at 4:30 and then gonna go till eight, and then we're gonna talk about what is one of our, one of our second most important things we're doing, like, we need to have another meeting that, to do it in.
I mean, if, you know, we can, I can work to get you the materials ahead of time to make it as streamlined as possible, but I think it's, you want to allow yourselves enough time to have a good discussion.
Yeah. Are we going to be overloaded with budget information?
Always overloaded with budget.
So should we look at the 13th or the 16th? That Monday or Thursday?
That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah.
Is sort of what the majority thinks. You know, do you want to power through on the Wednesday? Do you know, is this going to, just the second day?
Is the 13th too early and available, or no?
I, no, I already have an obligation on the 13th.
Yeah, so that's a no.
And the 13th.
So the 16th, the Thursday? We'll just spend our whole weekday with each other. Get some cots here and... The 16th, January? 16th works better for me. I can't do the 13th.
January 16th.
Yeah, so it'll be the 14th, 15th, and 16th.
At seven?
What makes the most sense? I'm looking at you, because how are you planning on doing Tuesday and Wednesday?
I left work at 5:15 and I got, it took me two hours to get here, so this is how it goes.
The weather was bad today for commuting.
So, I mean...
I think seven's best, really.
Yeah, I mean, I hate to hold everybody up. I mean, if I didn't actually have to read anything or visually see anything, I could do a call, right? And then you can have the discussion in person, I can just take it in the car, but I don't know.
I don't mind doing it seven, and if Dorothy says she'll try and get us, you know, anything in advance. I don't want to volunteer you for anything. And if I did, it wouldn't be something this mundane, it'd be something much larger.
Sounds like we're settling on the 16th at seven. Dorothy, would, I'm not dis-inviting you, I'm just saying, would Dr. Kuchenberger and Vinnie need to be here those days?
No.
For that day? Okay. So they would at least have some relief from the meeting.
They can see their families, you're allowed.
I do, I do want to ask then, if, so the community meeting to verify what you discuss on the 16th, the 15th is scheduled for the 16th?
Yeah.
You want to combine those and have, sort of have your discussion and then have community input to that afterwards, and then?
Yeah, how?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would make, we should. It would be more, it would be more efficient for our time.
Yep.
Okay.
And does this need to be televised, or can we meet maybe in?
This thing?
What?
This thing that we're talking about right here? Yeah, that needs to be televised.
Yeah, if you're going to have, if you're combining with the community input, you would want it someplace where you have a lot of space. Yeah, if you're gonna have, if you're combining with the community input, you would want it someplace where you have a lot of space.
Yeah. Okay.
What time were you planning on the community meeting?
I would, I would have that still at seven o'clock, have them listen to your discussion and then have, you know, sort of a hearing to respond to your discussion. That's basically what it would be if you did it on two nights.
I actually like that. I like that idea, the more it, the more here it.
That meeting will end up being like seven to eight thirty-ish, I would, yeah.
Probably.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, okay.
We should play bingo guessing which community members are actually gonna be here.
All of them because I'm going to personally invite them. And anybody who wants to be on that, screening committee should really show up, because that's how we'll get to know you.
So this will, this will also, if this looks okay, this will give you the dates for the screening committee that you need to get out there so as you're soliciting interest.
Yeah, so that's gonna be at the twenty-second meeting, right?
Yeah, so, so you could decide who's on the screening committee also at the twenty-second meeting.
On the twenty-second meeting, yeah.
And then that would give people roughly a, you know, several weeks to know that they were on it.
Yeah. Just gonna add that to this.
Yep, yep. And then I moved the February twenty-sixth, that was the Ash Wednesday, I moved that to the Tuesday. Which doesn't, which is the screening committee, not the school committee. And then we go from there.
So I'm sorry, what are we talking, the twenty-fifth is moved to the what?
Well, the twenty-sixth is Ash Wednesday.
So you moved it to the twenty-fifth?
Meeting night. So I moved it to the twenty-fifth.
That's still, that's shrove Tuesday. Okay, fine.
That would be fat Tuesday.
Still a holly, holy.
Holly or margarita intake?
All right. Pancakes. Get rid of all the fat and lard.
So just make sure you're looking at March and marking out dates on your calendar when things will happen then.
So visits would be during the week of March twelfth through the nineteenth?
Yep. So that's, actually that's, I mean, twelfth through the nineteenth. It was sort of like in order to fit them in, rather than be during the same five days, I kinda spread it out. I think the twelfth is a Thursday into the next
Yep.
week to allow a little bit of flexibility.
Yep. Okay. There's already things on my calendar that week.
We good?
Yeah.
Good to me.
Thank you.
All right.
So tomorrow, Vinnie's going to be putting, hopefully finalizing the rescheduling dates and putting out the letter to let people know that they can apply to be on the screening committee.
Yep, I already, Vinnie and I already talked about the rescheduling dates for the first week in January.
Yep.
And then, you know, we also talked about any time you put out any information. Put the link out again.
Include the link.
Put the link out again.
If you're watching at home right now, you could multitask and do the survey. Link is on the HWschools.net.
Okay.
Thank you, Dorothy. How's turnout been?
Turnout has been sort of expected, not terrific, but, you know, in line with what I see in other districts.
Okay.
And, you know, people who are invested and participating well, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're jumping back in our programs. Do business B, Boys Ice Hockey Sample Program. So this is for approval for the booster program, right? That's all this is.
Do you wanna talk about it first?
Do the motion, then we can do a discussion.
I move that the Hamilton Wenton Regional School Committee approved the Boys Ice Hockey Sample Program as was passed around earlier.
So we already authorized them to do this, right?
Yeah, this is more just information only for you to see an example of what the program would look like. You had requested that at a previous meeting. And so although this one is twenty sixteen seventeen, it's the same style as what they'll be doing this year. Well, they can't share the one that's in proof, something to do with like the sponsors and it has to, you know, go through final proofing before they can publish it. So we had to find an older one and I believe this was the last time they did it in the same way that they're planning to do it this year.
It looks second?
Yeah, I mean, it's just informational and we've already approved it. This should be action though.
All right, up next is donations.
I move that the Hamilton Wenton Regional School Committee accept the Boys Basketball Booster Parents, I guess I have to look at this, donation.
For the assistant coach.
For assistant coach.
Second?
It's in the amount of fifteen hundred twenty-two dollars for a point five paid assistant.
What page is that?
Second.
All those in favor?
I move that the Hamilton Wenton Regional School Committee accept the donation of a hundred and fifty dollars from the Friends of Buker.
Second?
This is for the winter, winter gathering?
All those in favor?
Sorry, I just wanna thank the Friends of Buker for that and I just wanna thank the Boys Basketball Booster Parents for their contribution.
I move that the Hamilton Wenton Regional School Committee accept the donation from Eastern Bank for the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for fifty people for the winter gathering.
Second?
All those in favor?
I, thank you, Eastern Bank. I move to, I move, I move to accept from the Hamilton Wenton Regional School Committee the donation from the Hamilton Wenton Ed Fund in the, for the, also for the winter gathering.
Second? Can they mount?
Sorry, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second?
All those in favor?
Thank you, Ed Fund. I move that the Hamilton Wenton Regional School Committee accept the donation from the Friends of Cutler in the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars for the winter gathering also.
Second?
All those in favor?
I move that the, thank you, Friends of Cutler. I move that the Hamilton Wenton Regional School Committee accept the donation from Looters Environmental. I don't know what this is, sorry.
It's for the winter gathering.
It's actually not for the winter gathering. They just make this donation each year. It's not a company that we use, but they make a general donation that can be applied to the district.
So thank you very much.
Second?
We've got a system over here. Let's make it roll.
All right. So now we are on to amending the twenty twenty-one school district calendar.
Yeah, so I could speak to that. In your packet, starting on page fifty, you have what was approved last December. And it had the teachers reporting to work on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, with the twenty-sixth being our orientation day for students entering grade six and nine. And then the first day for students wasn't until the following Monday. This posed a number of challenges for our teaching staff and also for families, we felt. So we brought this calendar back to the leadership team for review and got input from them. We also, I also collaborated with the union president of the Hamilton Wenton Education Association on two separate occasions to sort of brainstorm some different alternatives. And so what you see on page fifty-one is a proposed amendment which moves the return to teachers to that Monday, which is in line with what we did this year. We actually started on the twenty-fifth today, or today, this year. And so then you have two teacher workdays with that orientation happening for students entering grade six and nine on the second workday. And then all students returning on the following day, which will be August twenty-sixth. And what this allows us to do is end the school year a little bit earlier in June and builds in a little more time at the end for any potential snow days that we might have without getting too late into the calendar year. And this will look very similar when I recommend the approval of the following year calendar. What we really talked about was quality instructional time and when can we maximize our human resources to the best benefit of our students. And everyone involved in the discussions agreed that getting the students in earlier allows them to be more successful when it comes to standardized tests or AP exams and other things that happen in the spring. And that those, adding the days later in June isn't really the best use of our instructional time with our, with our kids. So the, the recommendation is to approve the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school calendar on page fifty-one of your packet with the first day of students being on Wednesday, August twenty-sixth.
So this is bringing the kids even earlier than usual and some people may, after it has already been approved, have already have plans for other things. And I know for one, our family does because it's a sport thing that's already involved. And so, you know, if you're, if they've already made, because we already voted in, if somebody's already made those arrangements to have to reschedule or forfeit money to do with something, it becomes a burden on those families too.
Yeah, we, we talked about all of those things and we think that the way the calendar currently was approved is out of the norm to have orientation and then not have the, all of the student body return. So again, same challenge for a family. If you have students who are entering grade six and nine and in other grades, you have to be back for that orientation day and then there's two days where there's no school before the rest of the students return. So we were trying to take all of those factors into play and ultimately made the recommendation based on what we felt was best for students, knowing that it will cause some challenges for folks and wanting to get that communication out as soon as possible if it's approved tonight. Yes, there would be school on August twenty-eighth and then they would return, and then they'd have the following Friday before Labor Day as we traditionally have off for the long weekend.
So this isn't coming back before Labor Day. This is coming back the week before, the week before Labor Day.
Yes.
Yeah.
It looks a lot like it did this year. We started on the twenty-fifth.
No, I get it. I hate, I hate both options.
The next two years. I mean, this is just the way the calendar cycles.
Call the Gregorian people up and ask them to change the calendar.
The next two years pose that challenge because Labor Day is really late.
Yeah, it's bad. Both, both options are bad.
Well, unfortunately, moving Labor Day is not in our control.
Nope.
The only reason I don't like this is because I know my last day is until this anyway, so.
And if we were to do what we traditionally have done, which would be to have the students come back on the second, that pushes the summer like back into like the twenty
Yeah, we'd be backed up.
Fourth, twenty-fifth, yeah. Back, with our back up against the wall if it as it was, not too long ago, it was pretty bad. I hated this one when we approved it.
So do, do kids, so say parents can't make changes, are kids penalized because they can't make their first week of school?
That's what that would mean.
A problem. Because we're talking about, you know, kids missing school and so this could be an issue. If they have plans. I know we do.
I know, but I would, I would go back to the point that Julie made about the time, the learning. It's better to have the learning earlier in the school year than, than late in June. So I know it's a sacrifice for some parents to have their vacation cut in August.
This isn't necessarily a vacation vacation with something sport related, so.
But again, it's educate.
Well, I'm just saying, we're trying, you're gonna ask parents to make a change, say if they've already planned ahead. Not everybody makes that plan. So I'm just saying, they'll be penalized for missing school. So when, so students would have originally come back on the thirty-first. So we literally, we're literally taking away the last week of summer vacation by making the change. Basically.
If we stick to the schedule that we have starting before?
Well, no, because originally students would, most students would not have come back until the thirty-first. Now they're gonna come back the week before. So if you had booked vacation for the last week of summer, now we've taken that away. If we vote that.
One, I don't know if this adds to your consideration, but one thing that we know to be sure at the high school is that any of our student athletes will be back because they'll already be in session and practicing.
Right. No, yeah. I'm not, I'm not concerned about them. I'm concerned about people with little kids. That's
We've never had much of a problem with people taking vacation when they have their vacation scheduled in this community.
Oh, yeah. It was February break, we had half the students here.
There's pros and cons to both calendars. I think for me, when I first came into the district, many people brought this up to my attention and saying that it really, it didn't quite make sense the start of the school year, so I wanted to bring it back to leadership and the union to get input. So the recommendation you have before you is based on all of that, those conversations and the collective input.
I appreciate your work.
I mean, people are also getting out earlier, right?
Yeah, and I mean, was it last year or the year before we started getting all the pushback when we started getting the snow days about the vacations planned for late June?
That was two years ago.
You get this on either end.
Yeah, you get it on either end, change.
You know, it's always gonna be a trade-off and, you know, there's a lot of people in the district, a lot of students in the district who are not traveling, who are still around their first week of school.
Exactly.
Regardless, I mean, we're not, we're not, we're not in the business of trying to please everybody, unfortunately. We just can't.
And full confession here, my son missed a significant number of days at the beginning of the school year this year for something educational and it was stressful for him, but he was able to make it up much easier than he would have been. You know, if he had missed, you know, that time in October or May or March, so. It's, it sucks. It sucks, but, yeah.
If you're gonna miss days, this is probably the best time to do it.
Yep. Well, then, the last couple days, so.
But also, I mean, you have to factor in, we have the input of academic specialists informing this calendar. I mean, I, that has to count for something and I don't wanna just completely ignore that.
Yeah, I agree.
And we can't be the only district grappling with this.
Yeah, well, I think we're gonna have a pretty sweet summer. That's what I think. I think our kids will be out of school a lot earlier than other districts will be.
Yeah, so they get the head up on their, on the jobs.
Exactly.
So there you go.
Yeah.
It's a win-win.
I move that the Hamilton Wenton Regional School Committee admit, amend the two thousand twenty twenty-one school calendar.
Second?
After the vote, if that's changed, I would highly recommend that there is an immediate communication of this.
And for the record, I just wanna say I agree with you. I hate starting before Labor Day, even though I know it's in this
I'm fine with before Labor Day. This is before before Labor Day. It's a week before Labor Day.
Just remind them, they came back on the twenty-seventh this year.
Yes, we will. You can, you can get buttons. We came back on the twenty-seventh this year.
One less week of summer this year too, so.
All right, well, hopefully it won't snow for the rest of the winter when we get out of this.
Yeah, oh, that'll kill us too.
All those in favor of the amended calendar? Opposed? Abstaining?
I didn't see your hand. Michelle?
Oh, I painfully put my head down and voted yes.
Is that 5-1?
That was not a very high answer.
No.
All right, thank you. And now, up next is the 2020-21-22 calendar.
Okay, so very similarly, we're looking at the calendar in much the same way. Again, given the way that Labor Day falls, we're trying to follow the same pattern with the teachers returning on the 20, the Monday, Tuesday, and then the students returning. One other thing that is different, we typically have had a teacher workday in October, but this year, Veterans Day falls on a Thursday. So, rather than bringing the students back for a Friday, we've moved that teacher workday so that the students will have a long weekend in November, a second long weekend in November. And the teachers will come in and have that professional development time.
And did you, you ran that through the union, because I think the contract gives the some, hmm.
Yes, we did, we discussed it together.
Yeah, I think it was the months, but then I think it wasn't in, didn't, the months, never mind. The months did not end up in this last iteration.
No, I don't think there's months. It just mentions 84 days.
Yeah, perfect.
So, a lot, the rest of the calendar looks very similar, that long weekend in September. The parent-teacher conferences are right about when they typically are. And we're maintaining the, the early release on the Wednesday before, the Wednesday of winter break. Even though the holiday falls on a weekend, we think that it's still, you know, valuable to give families that longer time to sort of travel or do what they need to for the holidays and the new year.
How does this affect seniors? Do they get, when do they get out? Do they get out a week earlier or?
That's a good question.
Because they start a week earlier? Because normally, they've got a break between when everyone's out because of finals. So, do they get a little bit more time? Are they going to be out before the January, uh, June 4th, 3rd, I mean, or an out?
So, they always graduate on the first Saturday, or, yeah, the first Saturday of June.
They like stop going to school, like, right after.
What's that?
AP tests are over. They're like done.
I would, Eric, could you come to?
168.
And they, so we, you go from, you have to count 12 days back from the, the original last day of school.
You count how many?
12 days back.
Okay.
And they can start their finals.
24th of May.
Yeah, which is around, usually right around the same time.
Okay.
Yeah.
I love that.
It was just shocking to me last year, like.
That's just, it's nice.
It was shocking.
So, the recommendation, I'm sorry, the recommendation is to approve the 2021-22 calendar as printed on page 52 of your packet.
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee move to approve the 2021-22 school calendar as proposed on page 52 in our packet.
Second?
All those in favor? I think I was too generous.
No, I think I'm not going to vote, because I, yeah, I think I'm going to abstain on this one. Yeah.
So, we will send all these, both of these calendars out tomorrow to the whole entire school community.
I have one thing I didn't get a chance to look at here.
All right, so up next.
Can I just ask one question? So, where is Good Friday listed on this calendar?
So, in 2021, or 21-22, Good Friday is on April 15th. So, it connects right up to the, the spring break.
It should be list, I see why, now, okay.
It is, yep.
I see what happened to it. Okay, thank you. I would vote in the affirmative then, never mind.
So, we're making that unanimous then?
Yes, we're making it unanimous. Sorry, I could be a pain in the neck.
Okay.
It's really late.
Thank you.
Right, Benny?
All right, now, the warrant for the school committee nomination papers.
It's on page 53.
Do you have a copy for us to sign? Julie?
Yes. Do you have to vote to approve it first?
Yes, but I just want to make sure, are you going to put that on the back?
No, we'll just color copy it.
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee approve the warrants for elections of the members of the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee for our next election.
Second?
All those in favor? Unanimous?
Can I? So, 5 o'clock? So, the district offices are going to stay open till 5 o'clock on that day?
That they tend to, right?
Yep. Okay, so, just as long as everybody knows that it has to stay open till 5 o'clock that day?
We're always there.
Well, the door has to be unlocked until 5 o'clock that day.
All right, moving right along. Excuse me. Now, looking at the 10-year, 10-year capital improvement plan and FY21 capital budget recommendations from Tom Geary, our director of facilities.
Everything went to sleep.
It's kind of.
Have to push the top maybe.
No, he should just be able to press. It just takes a minute. 9802. 9802.
It's, it's coming in.
She's got some good eyes.
Thank you.
61.
61.
61.
So, the capital information begins on page 61, and Mr. Geary's presentation begins on page 62.
All right, thank you all for having me. It's my pleasure to come and present this to you. This is what I have been working on since my start in September. I was tasked originally with coming up with the revised five-year capital improvement plan. And I took that five years and tried to give a 10-year look for the school committee. So, first, I share this slide, because everybody has seen clips like these in the news, whether it be local news or national news, and the state of the infrastructure of our schools across the nation. When we communicate those issues, the first thing people say when they see the price tag is, you know, "But it's so expensive." And people worry about the taxes associated with such, which then leads into, well, I guess it's good enough. And we proceed with the conditions of our schools. So, how do we, as a district, avoid the butts and the wells and address our needs here in Hamilton Wenham? So, first, collectively, we all need to come up with a strategy for our elementary schools. As you're aware, last year, a statement of interest was filed with the school building authority for the Winthrop and the Cutler Schools to do, that was under the core program with the MSBA, to do a significant renovation, addition, or new construction to satisfy the disparities in those two buildings. Unfortunately, we were not invited into a program in the 2019 round of approvals. However, the application period opens back up January 8th and extends until April 8th. And it's my hope that, you know, as the administration, along with the governance team of the school committee, that we can apply again to try to get into the pipeline for a project for our elementary schools. Secondly, of course, without leaving, we don't want to leave the middle school and high school out of focus. And we need to also come up with a long-term strategy for the needs at the middle school and high school. I should remind everybody that the debt is paid off for the middle school. That came off the books, I believe, last year. So, that is paid off. But I should note that a lot of the spaces at the high school and the middle school still need some thought, because if we were to design those two buildings with today's standards, they would not match up with the gross square footage required in science facilities, special education facilities, and other, other spaces throughout the facility. So, before I dive into the FY21 proposal, I just want to share with you and also the public of what exactly is a capital expense. And rather than read right from the slide, I can sum it up and say that it's a land acquisition, a major building improvement, major site improvement, or major equipment purchase that exceeds $25,000. Bringing back to last year, the 2018-2019 proposed plan was one of the documents that I reviewed in order to prioritize the work that we were going to move forward for an FY21 proposal. So, not only did I review those proposals, I reviewed previous studies conducted by SMMA in 2014 and Doran Whittier, starting back from 2008. And I believe in 2011, they did another study, conducted facility walkthroughs with town leadership, both the town administrator and the town manager from the towns of Hamilton and Wenham. I continue to document all of our assets, whether it be equipment related to the facilities, school furniture, and try to come up with a life-cycled model, so we can plan these things out years ahead of when we need to replace certain items. Also developed a tool to work with the capital finance subcommittee of your school committee to prioritize the needs for FY21. So, the first go-around with the capital finance subcommittee, we had, for an FY21 capital investment request of nearly $1.8 million, that was $1,838,500. Subsequent to that, the capital finance subcommittee had tasked us with coming in under $1 million. So, our FY21 capital investment request stands at $958,000. As you can see here, between the two slides, anything shaded in green on the investment requests for number two, it just means that it was kicked down to another year, right? So, the problem doesn't go away, we just kind of move it down to another year. So, in summary, the FY21 requests are listed on this slide. The total investment, again, is $958,000. And I have a slide for each project, so rather than run down this list here, I'll go into the projects.
Tom, just a clarification. In your packet on page 67, if you're looking at the slides printed there, these numbers were revised. So, the amount listed there has been revised from $1,006,000 to $958,000, if you wanted to make that note.
Can I ask just a quick question? So, is this a request that would come in, in our operating, or is this a request that would come in through bonding? Or we haven't decided yet?
No, I'm glad you asked that question, because we would be looking at a separate budget from the operating budget. We'd be looking to establish a capital budget.
Okay.
Going forward, so. First project on the list was a security infrastructure improvement. As I conducted walkthroughs, not only with the town administrator and town manager, but also with folks that are sitting up there in your seats, we pointed out some of the security vulnerabilities that we have in our schools. And I don't want to detail them in a public session. Of course, I'm hoping you can respect why. But we would, just to give a broad overview, we'd be looking at implementing a visitor management system, which would require check-in at the front desk by all school visitors and contractors that work for us. Interior and exterior security camera system, and electronic card access system, all united on one enterprise-level server. So, all of the systems will work in conjunction with each other. Can also speak to the visitor management system. Other than just checking people in, it's also valuable for our first responders, because we have very good attendance records of our teachers, we have good attendance records of our students. But when it comes to the visitors, to be able to, at the click of a button, print out who is in our building, is valuable to the first responders. Next up, for a total investment of $63,000, we are looking to upgrade the phone system at the middle school, high school. We've had issues, just as current as this year and in previous years as well. Many of the parts are not available for us to repair the system. So, this would be, extend the useful life of the phone system at the middle school, high school. Right now, I have a placeholder of $250,000 to further study our elementary schools. And this would include a deep enrollment study. This would include community visioning, because this shouldn't just be Tom Geary's vision of what the schools need, or even the school committees. This should be the entire community's visions of what we need for an elementary school. And I think it's valuable to get all stakeholder input and, at the same time, writing the educational plan that'll be required by the MSBA if we get invited into the pipeline for their, their projects.
So, your thought process would be to roll this into an SOI, hopefully, you know, going into, in January or the spring, winter, spring?
Yes, but this would be, this is for FY21 again, right? So, but this will all be valuable data that will contribute to a project if we are selected in the next round.
And we can note in the SOI application that we are engaging in this process and what we intend, what products or outcomes we intend to have. And we're hopeful that that will make our project more appealing, because they'll know that there's community investment, or that we're seeking to gain community investment along the way.
And how will this be different than the one we did with, what was that, SM something?
SMMA?
Yeah.
How will it be different? The SMMA study looked, I believe, at the existing infrastructure and how to extend the useful life of the current buildings in place, with the current grade structures in place, with the enrollment data that they had at the time. So, I hope to see a change, because I'm not sure that, was community visioning involved in that process?
Three full days you had to commit. And it was community, parents, and God, loads of staff. There was a ton of people, and it was three eight-hour days.
Well, it'll be way more fun this time.
It was, it was fun, but it was like, that's a lot, it's a lot to ask a, a community member to take off three days of work.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
For visioning.
Yes.
And then do absolutely nothing with it.
Yes.
Yeah, it was a little frustrating to some who've expressed. Yes, I'm very frustrated by it.
I'm glad you actually brought up that last comment, because my hope is that this, this study would be different, because we won't just do nothing with it. I am hopeful that at the, you know, when I report back in five years, that we're either breaking ground or ready to finish the project.
Thank you, five years, you're on, and I'll be here.
Yeah, that, people will be asking, because they're going to say, "We've done so many things and nothing's gone, gone to fruition, and so, how's this going to be different?" They're going to ask.
Sure, sure. If I could move on to the next slide. I have $120,000 investment in the classroom furniture and equipment across the district. I've, back in October, I brought in some of the modern seating that's used in classrooms around the country, to compare it with some of the furniture that's used at the high school when it was first opened up. So, a picture below, maybe in black and white, but it's the same style of desk that kids were, are using at the high school today versus what students are learning in, in other schools across the country.
That's actually the exact picture, minus the children, that our high school students used earlier to show what an AP class looks like.
Yeah, it is.
So, this would also build on the generous donations from the Ed Fund. Since 2014, the Ed Fund has contributed nearly $100,000 in modern school furniture. So, at this point here, it's my opinion that the district should invest in this furniture across, across the district. Replacing one of the sidewalks at the middle school, anybody that's visited the middle school can see the horrible condition that our front entrance is in. It's been reported to me by the middle school principal that they have at least two to three trips a week by students. Just two years ago, I believe, we had an injury with a broken limb by a parent. Aside from the liability to the district, this isn't the first impression we want to make to our students getting off the bus and to our community that's visiting the middle school. I think that we should, you know, have that value and. I think that we should, you know, have that value instilled in us, that the first impression when you reach a facility should be warm, welcoming, and not surrounded with the safety cones that I had to put out today for our event.
Like a road race.
And actually, that's the entrance where all the high school sports, for basketball and volleyball, that's how they enter, visiting teams and parents too.
No, and I thank you for adding that. Another investment is $65,000 to relaunch the athletic campus improvement project. Okay, we've heard from youth sports groups about not being able to access the fields. Other surrounding communities have turf fields that our students go to play on. Our fields basically are in deplorable condition and are unsafe for our athletes. $65,000 would allow us to bring in Gale associates who did the original design work, refine the scope, update the pricing, and then we also want to look at adding tennis courts, that's been a common theme after discussing with the community groups, and also examine the possible Title IX issues. I think it's important that we look at the equity between sports, so I think that's worth to, worth a look with the designer to make sure that we have a refined scope. So in closing, again, it's a $958,000 investment for the FY21 capital budget. I leave the slide up here just to sum up how the costs can be grouped. So by category, we have $460,000 associated with safety, $435,000 associated with the learning environment, $63,000 associated with critical infrastructure. And below that is a table of how the account, how we would classify it by account. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on any of the investments I presented tonight.
My only question is, so if we're gonna do a study to deal with the athletic fields, not a fan of the whole thing, but I'm coming around to the concept that these need to be dealt with, what are we gonna do to have fields next year? If what we're gonna do next year is study?
I think in order to bring a responsible project to the voters, we really need to define the scope and make sure our pricing is adequate and accurate. So it's been a few years since the studies have been done, there's been changes in construction costs, and also the fact that tennis courts were left out of the project, and there's other considerations. I feel it's responsible to, you know, reengage the designer and make sure that our costs are tight before we bring a project forward.
So we'll be in the same situation next year with pretty much unusable?
Yes.
Track, unusable football field?
Yeah, so the track, we would not be able to address through operations and maintenance. However, you will see when I present my operating budget to you in the workshops on January 14th and 15th, that there is an increase in contracted services for landscaping. I feel that we should be dedicating some more funds towards better care of our athletic fields.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask a question about the furniture?
Yes.
How would we go about deciding what's best? Because the picture you had with the triangle desks, as a teacher, I can tell you, they're a disaster, they just do not work well. I know it's...
Beverly Middle School bought those and they hate them.
They just do not work for collaboration, they just don't fit well together, they're tippy, they, they're, yeah.
As far as shapes and geometry goes, I'm a fan of trapezoid, but I don't want to make it my decision or central office's decision. So if the project is funded, the investment is funded, and the money is earmarked for that, I intend to set up a committee, a committee district-wide, all grade levels, to design the ideal classroom for each and every grade level. And I think hearing the teacher's voice, student voice, and also leadership voice, we can come up with a good solid plan for that ideal classroom from pre-K to 12th.
Yeah, it really should be teacher-driven, student-needs-driven, not, yeah.
Don't intend to just sit with a catalog and, you know, circle things, right? This is to be done through a superintendent's advisory committee and being able to make, you know, a community decision.
Because learning is taking a new turn, taking a new direction as well, so we should think of the future. We'll probably have this furniture for next...
Fifty years.
Fifty years.
Well, if it's based on how much use we got out of the original high school furniture?
Fifty years.
Yeah.
We'll make sure we make good investments.
Check the user ratings.
Thank you.
Can you provide your slideshow to us? Is that possible?
The slideshow should be in your packet, but I can also send you the digital copy.
The digital, that'd be great, so that I can forward it to the FinComs and so they can have that in, if that's public.
Sure.
It's public, yeah. We actually plan to share both presentations tonight, the one that Vinnie and I are about to do when we're done, and Tom's with everyone. Everybody will have it.
So for the benefit of those watching, especially any of the board, the select board men, select board, members of the select board or the FinComs, so Tom has, so from the capital finance subcommittee, we've been meeting monthly, Tom's attended many of those meetings, if not all of them. We've had many good lengthy discussions about how to approach a capitalist, we've given him guidance on what some of our expectations would be in terms of at least the first year. We've had members of the Hamilton Capital Committee attend the meeting, so they have been informed and have participated in those subcommittee meetings. So this is not, so I just want to make sure that people know their process, so that this is, that, you know, again, for the select board benefit, as well as the FinComs benefit, that this is a informed discussion and presentation that Tom is providing to us.
Perfect. And thank you, Tom, for your hard work in unearthing every stone and crumbling piece of concrete too. Thank you.
I mean, it's definitely nice having a fresh set of eyes sort of looking at everything, and you've done a great job of sort of hearing what everyone, everybody's been saying. You know, it's sort of some of the stuff that's up in the air, and I like the fact that it is, to some people it might seem like, oh, are we just sort of doing the same thing over again? I think that it's, we're seeing that there was a few things left out of some old studies or we're just outdated in some studies and just, there's no, realizing there's no way of successfully moving forward without, you know, sort of re-establishing our base. You know, and I think this is a great start, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, so I do also want to point out, and make sure that everybody understands, right? This is one year of a 10-year proposed plan that will be iterative in years two to 10, right? We need to understand that. So in this first year, what Tom's proposing, what I hope that the school committee will adopt, is a capital request to the towns of, you know, some amount, if not this list, with the idea and intention, though, that there are many things that will happen in years two to 10, right? So I don't want to...
Right. We're not packing in one to five in one year.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, so again, the Hamilton Capital Committee, the attendees, the members who have attended our meeting, you know, we've had discussions about how Hamilton has been trying to address the towns' capital needs. You know, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to speak for them and what they are planning, but, you know, I feel like they have been informed and know that there is a long-term plan that the school committee, the school committee is considering, including, you know, $65,000 for the design is not the field, right? There's a lot of work that still will need to be done, but assuming that the, again, the voters of the towns approve that the, you know, commitment of these funds to a real thing, right, that's a long-term commitment. So I want to make sure that people know that because we are suggesting and recommending, I would say, I don't know if I can speak for everybody, but I would recommend that we, you know, this is a stake in the ground for how we want to invest in the capital needs of the schools, of the district, right? So I will say that.
The only thing, and I'll, you don't have to answer this now, but does the security infrastructure improvements include that ramp out there? So...
So...
Because if there's a redesign, I think you were trying to address that, but that will just be the question I'll ask later, so...
It does not. So the security infrastructure improvements is tied directly to access control, security cameras, visitor management, and communications.
Okay, so it doesn't have anything to do with what we were talking about, moving entrances to buildings?
It does, it does not.
Okay.
And I should note, I'm sorry, that originally there was 650,000 built into Phase One. I mean, the complete project was 650,000. We had to break it up over two phases in order to come in under that million-dollar threshold. So we have $350,000 this year and $300,000 next year, based on the 10-year plan.
Not convinced on the strategy, but we'll see what happens.
And just a talking point for the community, I've heard much of what was said tonight about the frustration of investing in all these studies and then not seeing the action happen, and that's unfortunate that the community has gone through that. What I would want the community to understand, that it would be completely reckless for us to propose any sort of large capital investment without having the most current, up-to-date information, so that we are getting the best return on investment ultimately, and you do have to spend money upfront to make sure that we have those documents because they will become very important in communication with our community members. They'll want to know what they're investing in, and one of the questions I get very regularly is like, what's going on with the elementary schools? What's the plan? And so this will help us be able to say, we've vetted all of these different scenarios and options, because there really are a lot of choices in how we choose to move forward. I think that one thing that seems pretty clear to me is that dumping millions of dollars into our current three smaller elementary schools, given the condition that they're in, would not be the wisest investment for the community, so now we need to really engage the community to find out what would they be willing to support and what might that look like, in a way that, to Peter's point, is gonna make us really future-ready, as future-ready as possible.
And we don't want to get in the situation that Ipswich got into where they didn't have the community vision before they had the agreement on the money, then they lost the money.
And I'm actually glad, I mean, when I was at the MSBA last week...
Yeah.
It was unsettling to hear that the city of Holyoke had two schools up, and they were slated to receive a high reimbursement rate, and the community did not vote it in. So they had to remove the project funding. So it's disappointing to see a community get that far and have the state have to pull the money back because the community didn't support it. So I think it's best for us to do our due diligence to make sure we know what the community wants before we move forward.
Thank you, Tom.
No, you're very welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me while I fall off the chair.
All right, now we get to discuss the FY21 preliminary budget.
Thank you, everyone. I'm here.
We will see you many, many times again. We're meeting on the second again, right?
Second?
January.
Up, up, up.
Of January.
Eight.
We're not meeting on the second.
No.
Yes, eighth.
January eighth.
Yeah, something else is going on on the second, I better find out what it is.
Okay.
Great, thanks, Mary.
Thank you. Oh, I think, I think I know what it is.
We're meeting on January, school committee?
Yeah. You get the budget, tentative budget.
I can show up and talk to them.
Well, I haven't missed one yet. 100% in 10s.
Yeah. Five of us.
Fancy, huh?
That was cool.
So good evening, as you know, I'm Vinnie and this is Dr. Julie Kuckenberger. We're here to present our preliminary FY20 budget proposal, which has been compilated by not just us, but the entire district leadership team over the past month and a half.
At least.
I'm sorry, you guys have not, how much have you met with the outside, Board of Selectmen, I'm sorry, Board of Selectmen and FinComs thus far?
We've had, we've had one joint meeting together, and then we kind of each went into our own departments, if you will, to begin developing our budgets, and then we're presenting to you tonight preliminary numbers.
Have they seen preliminary numbers?
No, they have not seen them before you.
Well, they have if they looked online.
Well, right. The numbers have been, yeah, they've been with the agenda packet, but we don't think it would be appropriate to present that to them before we're sharing them with you. And so they do know, they're aware of the timeline, that has been shared, that was shared back in November. This is an adjustment to the timeline, we weren't necessarily anticipating presenting preliminary numbers before the tentative presentation. However, both the town manager and town administrator have been informed of the adjusted schedule so that they are aware, and like I said, our intent is to send a communication tomorrow to both town manager and town administrator, and Board of Selectmen, FinComs, and the capital committee in Hamilton. That way, everyone has the most current information. One thing I will share with you, these are preliminary numbers, we're gonna keep saying that these are preliminary numbers, and that really tonight, the objective is to review these preliminary numbers with you so that you can begin to understand the FY21 budget development process. We've had this conversation with the Capital Financial Planning Committee, they know much more than the full committee does at this point, and so we're just, our intent tonight is to make sure that we're being really transparent with the process and where we are today, knowing that these numbers are going to change. They are changing every day with new information that we learn about our staff, our student needs, and also some of the outside revenue streams that we have. So like I said, we'll be talking about the process a little bit, we'll also talk about the impact of the unbudgeted FY20 student needs that you know about, and then we'll dig into some of the primary drivers for the FY21 budget, and then also talk briefly about some, or not briefly, but include our projected student needs.
Did I go too far?
How do you fix your computer?
No. Okay. Yeah.
So on July 18th, we were presented with a preliminary budget forecast of a $638,000 deficit. As you can see, this was mainly due to out-of-district placements that we, that at the time was forecasted at 503,000. In addition to that, we had a pre-K, an additional pre-K teacher and an additional kindergarten teacher, and therefore, health insurance for both of them was also included. So then on October 16th, Julie and I updated you with the forecast at the time. At that point, we predicted that we would end the year at a 300 and roughly $10,000 deficit. This reduction was mainly due to salary reduction through attrition, employees retiring that we didn't see coming before, or employees leaving the district and us hiring new ones at a lower salary. At the time, there was still many items in motion, the biggest one obviously, all the time, is out-of-district placements. In addition to that, was health insurance. Now, at the time, we were still in open enrollment period for any new employees hired over the summer and during September. At this time, we have those numbers back, and almost all of them did enroll in health insurance, and in addition to that, we've had multiple retirees move into the Medicare Enhanced Plan that we did not anticipate before. So in addition to the $310,000 we were projecting, we are seeing an additional $110,000 in health insurance costs that we had not budgeted for. And all, in addition to that, employee leaves are always in motion. Right now, we have, I believe, six or seven employees that are out on some type of leave, so those costs are... So those costs are always incurred throughout the year. So at this time, it brings our projected deficit to around four hundred and ten thousand. But in our second meeting in January, I'm planning on updating our forecast and at that time, providing you with budget transfers as well.
So the big question is, what does this mean? In general, it means that we're starting to build the FY twenty-one budget with a known two-point-two percent budget increase. All of those student needs don't go away because there's a new fiscal year coming. All of those staff benefits don't go away because there's a new fiscal year coming. So now that we've kind of reminded you where we are and where we've started the fiscal year, we'll jump into the next fiscal year. This is always the tricky part of developing the budget. You're usually straddling multiple fiscal years at one time if you're doing your due diligence and doing a thorough analysis. So we're going to kind of keep FY twenty in our mind as we start to think forward to FY twenty-one. And I think having the students here tonight was the perfect backdrop to remind us of what we do and why we do it. So one of the things I like to always bring to our attention is, you know, I use this table analogy to think about the foundation of our work. This is that mission that drives why we exist. What is our purpose? Why are we all here? This is easy to forget sometimes when we get into looking at the budget, because oftentimes we get drawn to that bottom line, but we have to keep our mission at the forefront. We also have to think about our vision. What is the type of school system we're trying to create for our students? You heard our seniors stand up here tonight and talk to you about the type of education that they need and what colleges are telling them they're looking for. It's our job to make sure that we're delivering on that promise. Of course, our values, all of this is a work in progress. This is something that we're reassessing across the district and in the community. But those values are the collective commitments that we have, those shared beliefs that we have, that then should drive our behavior and every single decision that we make. And then, of course, there's our goals, right? The fourth leg of the table, making that rock-solid foundation that everything we do can rest upon. So with that metaphor in mind, I will remind you of our mission statement. Although we know that there's some wordsmithing to do to this, I think the intent of it is, is true to our daily work, right? Our, we believe deeply that the purpose of the Hamilton Wenham Public School District, Regional School District, is to ensure that all of our students are able to realize their own unique potential. And if we're going to make that a reality for our students so that they can become productive citizens who have good character and are able to have the knowledge and skills that are necessary for today's workforce, then we have to make decisions that align to that. And we have to be willing to do whatever it takes, even when it's hard for our kids. And so in one of the packets that I gave you, you have a timeline of the budget process. I'm not going to go over this all for you necessarily, but I do want you to notice the areas that are highlighted in blue. One of the things that we heard loud and clear in working with our leadership team, the school committee and our, our community partners in both towns, was that there needed to be more collaboration and more communication, that they wanted the process to be more open and more transparent. And knowing this, and knowing that this aligns to both of our leadership styles, we've developed a timeline that allows for that. And we've also cautioned folks that we want to do this and we believe this is the right way to develop a budget. However, it takes more time. It's more meetings. It's always more valuable, I believe, to put a lot of smart people in a room to make decisions, but we have to be patient and take the time that it is necessary for that. So on this timeline, it shows you that we really started back in October, rolling the process out to the leadership team, talking to them about our vision for the process. There wasn't, on paper, the process doesn't look very different, but we've added a few things in here to make the process more authentic and collaborative. So then, we really started looking at new investment proposals based on student needs while also having lots of one-on-one conversations with our principals and our department leaders about their level service budget. And we'll get into that a bit as we work through the timeline. I would say probably up till now, with, outside of how many hours Vinnie spends working on the budget, when I'm not with him, or when we're not with the leadership team, we've probably spent a good, I would say, somewhere between forty hours in direct contact with the leadership team. And then lots of debriefing and reassessing between Vinnie and I, we've got to be close to about a hundred hours in the budget development process, constantly trying to refine and make sure that things are being communicated clearly. So we're going to start thinking about the FY twenty-one budget by asking or reminding ourselves what level service means. Lots of times, you hear people talk about level service, and they might mean level funded. Those are two really separate things. You can have a level funded budget that has no increase, and you can have a decrease in service, or you can have an increase in service. It's all about how you choose to use the funds within that budget. To us, a level service budget does not mean that we're flat funding. It means that we are looking at what is it that we're currently doing and what are the resources necessary in order to maintain our existing services and personnel? With that being said, it also means that we went line by line throughout this budget with every principal, with every department head, and we assessed what was in the, what was in the line, what was included in the line, and what was not included. We also looked back to, from FY seventeen on to look at spending trends and made decisions based on some of that. Another big decision that, or another big change that you'll see in this budget is that there's lots of realignment and reallocation. In our conversations with our principals, we were asking, well, what have you been charging to this line? And then we were looking at and saying, well, what is this line really intended for? And what we found was that we had to create some new budget lines, because we didn't have the appropriate lines. Therefore, it was causing people to charge purchase orders to lines where it maybe should not have been. So you're going to see lots of large percent increases, large percent decreases throughout the budget. Don't worry. When we bring you the tentative budget, we'll give you a nice one-pager that will highlight those different increases and explain to you why they're happening. But tonight, we're staying thirty thousand foot view, big picture of what's in our budget.
So straddling on level service, you have all of our contractual obligations. These are many things that are within the three union contracts we currently have. So the big-ticket items are obviously our COLA. Between the unions, there is somewhere between a two percent raise or two and a half, depending on which one you're talking about. But in the sum of them all, we're looking at approximately four hundred and eight thousand dollar increase. On top of that is the health insurance. We are budgeting somewhere around a seven percent increase. And when you factor in our enrollment growth already this year, we're projecting somewhere around a three hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase. In addition to that is our IDEA grant. So this is more of an accounting error. So in the past, we never accounted for our IDEA grant correctly. I've been in communication with our auditors and they had suggested to add it in this year. So it is approximately three hundred and sixty-seven thousand. You will also see an offsetting revenue. So this has no bearing on the assessment to the town, but it does factor into the overall increase in our operating budget. In addition to that is the steps. So every year, teachers, TAs and custodians and secretaries all earn a step. We're calculating this to be approximately two hundred and ninety thousand. In addition to that, there are lane changes in the teacher's contract. So throughout the year, teachers can accumulate college credits and apply them to move lanes. In addition, this year, they added an M fifteen column, and we had a record number of teachers apply for it. And since I've been here, that is the, a hundred and sixty-four thousand is the biggest increase I've seen, and this is mainly due to the new column. In addition to that, our Essex Retirement Appropriation is going up approximately sixty-nine thousand. We received a letter from the County Board, I believe, on Monday that increased this amount. And in addition to that, the teacher's contract also requires us to fund an additional ten thousand dollars for our tuition reimbursement. These items alone, just from the contracts that we agreed to, accumulates to a four-point-eight percent increase over FY twenty-one. In addition to that, we have current services in FY twenty accounting for a two-point-seven percent increase. This is mainly due to the unbudgeted FY twenty special ed tuitions that I previously talked about as to why we're in a deficit this year. In addition to that, you have a hundred and seven thousand in unbudgeted transportation costs from this year that was not included in the budget. And like I said before, we have the new kindergarten teacher. The new SRO is, will be on our books next year where it wasn't this year. We have the new pre-K teacher, one new special ed TA and two new pre-K TAs because of the additional classroom. Those are the biggest drivers in the current services that we're going to see in FY twenty-one as well. In addition to that, we have a couple of big annual rate changes, mainly due to our utilities contract coming up and our, both our special ed and general ed transportation increases. In addition to that, we, we have found our AEDs, the life-saving devices that you will see everywhere. We entered into a five-year lease with them that was not explicitly broken out in the budget, so you will see it this year. That is a little south of sixteen thousand. So with all these items combined, these alone are accounting for about seven to eight percent of the overall increase.
So everybody take a deep breath. All right, so.
You're going to need those defibrillators when you show these to other people.
So.
That's why I said those last.
So those are just some of the things that, that's level service, right? It's not level funded. Those things exist today. And they still, there's still a need for them in the upcoming year. And so what we're trying to do is just budget more accurately, right? And including them right up front instead of hoping that we can cover them throughout the year. The other, in addition to the timeline, I gave you a handout that looks like this. I'm going to walk you through that here, but just so you know, you have this with you. And what this tool, this is my favorite tool in the budget process because it really allows us to see how the budget literally is built throughout the process. And so we start looking at FY, the approved FY twenty budget. In this case, on your sheet, we took out OPEB because that wasn't funded, and it also, we also took out the debt. And so you can see the, what the assessment was to both towns as well. And we start building the budget from here. And so on this sheet here, or on this slide, this is level service. So it's all those things that Vinnie talked about. And up top here, when you're looking at this sheet, this is showing you the gross number. So when you hear gross budget, you think expenditures. These are all the things that are costing us money, with human resources obviously being the biggest piece of the pie, right? And so in this column, it shows you the change in dollars from the approved FY twenty. Remember, that's not the current real budget that we're living right now. That's what was approved by the voters. And then it shows you the percent increase over that approved budget. Down here, we then take into consideration all of our non-tax revenues. And so that is a six point, that's about six-point-three million dollars this year. We less that from the gross to get what we call, what's called the net budget, right? And then we have the dollar change from FY twenty approved, and we have the percent change from FY twenty approved. And so this is, you can think in your mind really simplistically about level services, closing the doors in June and opening them up again in August. But we actually put a lot more effort into this part of the budget. This is the, like, the most time-consuming part of the budget development process. This is when we're, Vinnie and I had all of those one-on-one meetings. We started with two hours per principal, per department, going line by line. Many, many of them have had subsequent meetings and/or follow-up conversations based on specific questions that we had for them. Also, our principals and directors have been charged with the responsibility to now go back through those level services now that we've been through much of the process. And they're giving us sort of a list of any proposed refinements, and they're also double-checking the numbers to make sure that we recorded our conversations accurately. One of the things that we also did in this part of the process that was new was we kept really great internal process notes about how we got to each number. And we tried to be as consistent across the board as we could, including formulas to calculate things like amount of professional development per teacher or amount of supplies per classroom. So again, you'll see those adjustments when we get to the, when you get the tentative budget in early January. So here's where we're starting, right? Level services, it includes all of those unbudgeted FY twenty needs and all of those contractual obligations and all of those rate changes that Vinnie spoke about in the previous slide. But we don't just build from here. We then ask ourselves, okay, who's retiring? Do we know of anyone resigning? Is there anyone who we know is not going to be joining us next year from a personnel standpoint? And then this year, we have just two retirements that will be happening. Unfortunately, last year, going into FY twenty, there was a much, obviously much more breakage. This is a really small amount of breakage for us. So the timing doesn't work in terms of, you know, retirements and personnel turnover reductions, as we can see today, to kind of offset that large increase that we know we are going to have. But we'll continue to refine this number too, as we learn more, as staff make life decisions and share that with us. So now, when you're looking at this, you're seeing that the gross budget is increasing nine-point-one-four percent as opposed to the nine-point-three-two percent in the previous slide. There's that little bit of reduction. And that we're starting with a net budget at eight-point-nine percent. This would be a high budget in any given school year. This is not a normal fiscal year. There's a lot of contributing factors to this that you all know about. And so we, we're very cognizant of that as we, as we have been assessing our needs as a leadership team. So now we're at level services refined, okay? This is kind of, this is where we start. The next category is you're going to see level services plus the required investments. So as you know, there are certain things we are required to provide to students, like a free and appropriate public education. And that takes resources to do that. We're also required to make sure that individual student needs are met, particularly those with, of students who are on individualized education plans. In some cases, that requires out-of-district tuition or specialized services or supports. And that's what's included here in this required investment. And so in here, we have budgeted for projected out-of-district placements, basically looking at all of our pending cases or all of our students who are currently on IEPs that have the potential to be placed out, because we want to avoid what happened this year. And when we looked back at the history of, of tuition projections versus what actually happened and the impact that it had on the budget, we found that every single year, we either spent just as much or more than what was projected. And so we went through a very thorough process with our special ed, our student services department to look at, what are all the known placements that exist today? And then we had to calculate rate increases for those, right? So that part would be included in the level services portion. And then we looked at all of the known unknowns. These are the students who currently are in our school system, who are currently, are currently either out of, already placed out and were in some sort of pending little litigation, or that we think have the potential to be requested to be placed out. And we calculated that, and that's how we come up with our projection. So that is, that attributes to a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar increase in this required investment that you see here. This also includes, also in this category, we have a point-four FTE for a therapeutic teaching assistant. It's a currently a point-six FTE. We believe that by making this full-time, we'll be able to better serve the students who are in the program and therefore, hoping that we can keep them here in our neighborhood schools where, where we think they belong. We also have had great success with our elementary language-based program. That program is housed at Cutler. We currently have three full-time teaching equivalents for that program. And the incoming need is requiring an additional teacher, so we've budgeted for an additional language-based classroom teacher. Again, that's, that helps us serve our students right here in their local community. Currently, we have two ESL tutors that work with us part-time. We're seeing, although our ESL population is small, we're seeing an increase in the need, and we're having a hard time serving our students spread across our five elementary schools with those two tutors. So what we're hoping to do is shift the program to one of our elementary schools. It'll take a couple of years to do that because depending where kids are and their, and their grade levels. It'll take a couple of years to do that because depending where kids are and their, and their grade levels, they may not want to change schools. But as incoming students come to the district, we'll localize that program into one school and hire one full-time ESL teacher that will be able to serve the, those students' needs more efficiently and more effectively, again, keeping students in our communities. We also do have a required investment of twelve thousand five hundred dollars for field rental due to unplayable athletic fields. So we looked at, you know, what happened this year. We looked at the improvements that the, that Tom Gary is going to be making with the maintenance of the fields. And we projected that we will still have some field rentals to the tune of twelve thousand five hundred dollars. And then we have one other position in this required investment. It's a board-certified behavior analyst, a BCBA. If you've looked at any school job posting lately, you see there's millions of these jobs out there, not millions, but lots of these jobs out there. Again, this is, right now, we are spending more than the cost of one teacher's salary, one BCBA's salary because we're contracting out and we're using contracted services to meet the needs of our students. We believe that having our own BCBA, who is a full-time employee of the district, will be able to do that more efficiently. And we'll also be able to provide more supports to our classroom teachers who are having to learn on the job how to best manage some really tricky and challenging student behaviors as, as some of our students are coming in needing more and more behavioral supports. And so those are the total investments that you see here. We're calling these required because we believe that it, it meets that compliance and that, that compliance mandate and allows us to better serve students in an individualized way. Of course, when it comes to budgets, there's always choices. These things are going, are going to need to happen in order for us to transition from this sort of triage state that we're in with students having to be placed out and to really build more programs right here in our district and better serve our students right here in our district so we don't get to that. It's not gonna happen overnight, it's gonna take time for us to do that. And you'll see that there's more investments as we continue here that speak to that same effort. It's really an all-hands-on-deck approach to trying to change the narrative here in the community. So, these are big numbers, we're in double digits. We're looking at an eleven point eight four percent over the gross budget that was approved in FY twenty and a twelve point two percent increase over the, the net budget. And so you might be wondering, well, why is the net budget percent change higher than the gross budget percent change? And it's just that our expenditures up there on the top line are, are outpacing our revenue. So the expenditures are going up, but the revenue is not. And that's why you're starting to see that divergence there. So now what I'm gonna walk you through, these, so this is to me the bottom line. These, this is what we absolutely have to do in order to best meet the, the current needs, the known needs. This doesn't even plan for unknown needs, the known needs of our, of our student population. What I'm going to share with you next is gonna get into some of the leadership team's new investment proposals. So every member of the leadership team was able to submit a proposal. They had to do a thoughtful analysis, they had to prove return on investment, and they had to pitch this investment to the whole entire leadership team. They then prioritized their investment based on what they know about their department or their school as either being required, high priority, mid-priority, or low priority. After we heard all of the proposals from pre-K to twelve, we then reassessed that prioritization list and we moved things around. And we started to categorize things in a couple of different ways. We started to look at which of these investments are preventative or proactive investments that could allow us to be more efficient and better serve our students in the long run. And we rated those and those ones emerged to the top of each category, whether it be high, mid, or low. We also started to look at things that we thought, is there another way we could fund this? Could this be grant-funded? Are there other opportunities out there? Could we reallocate staff? You know, is there another way for us to think about funding this? And that was highlighted in green and sort of like moved toward the bottom of the list. We also looked at things that were like, what's a big bang for our buck? That we could spend this amount of money upfront, but we know that the ROI is gonna come fast and furious. And that contributed to how we prioritized things. And so the top priority investment, hands down, you heard our high school principal talk about it a little bit when he spoke today, was an investment in our kindergarten programs. And so to your point, Michelle, we have twenty to twenty-two kids. I think we have one class of kindergarten that has twenty-three kids in that kindergarten classroom. It's so clear, the evidence is crystal clear that early intervention is the best return on investment. And when we think about that student-to-teacher ratio and we think about the needs of our incoming population, we're asking to have one full-time teaching assistant in every kindergarten classroom. This is not a new novel idea, this is not something wild and crazy. I taught kindergarten a decade or so ago. I had a full-time TA when I was a kindergarten teacher back then. And so did all of my colleagues. If you poll your, you know, our neighbors in the North Shore, I think you would find that most have at least a part-time TA supporting them. We've been sort of patching this need with the Title I grant. But as our Title I population shifts, as our students who are economically disadvantaged shift between our elementary schools, so does that funding. So currently, we have part-time TAs that support our kindergarten classes at Bukeur and at Winthrop. They're not with the class all day long, but we don't have funding available to do that at Cutler. So we have a part of a carryover grant where we're funding someone, I think until like April, but not there for the whole year and not, certainly not serving the whole classroom. So I'm happy to talk more about how this became our number one investment. I believe you've probably also heard about this for the last several budget cycles. It's something that we really need to, to make happen for our kids. So again, you're watching those percent increases for the gross and the net. And really what I'm trying to show you here is how these investments, you, you should be thinking in your mind, like, what's the return on that investment? And what's the impact on the bottom line? And I know it's hard to think about new investments when we already have really high percent changes over what was approved last year. But keeping in mind that, you know, we do sometimes have to spend money to save money. And that's what we're trying to do here. We heard earlier about the demand for mental health supports across our country, across our state, across our communities. The same is true inside our schools. You know, our, our schools are just microcosms of, of society and we have more and more students requiring a lot of social emotional supports. And so the leadership team has proposed a one-point-oh licensed social worker that would become the social emotional counselor. And this person would work with teachers and coaching teachers and also counseling and supporting students. So the, one of the things we're also finding is that it's not just about what we do inside the school. We really need to help families connect to resources. And so this person would also be sort of that broker, if you will, that will help identify various resources in the community that can help families cope and manage when they're not in the, here in school. And we believe that over time, that's going to help students learn how to self-regulate and self-manage and be more successful in the school. So this brings us to a thirteen point four-six net increase over the approved FY twenty budget. So as a leadership team, we then also felt that it was important to provide some sort of support for academic support after school at the high school level. We already have a late bus and we feel like this is a real opportunity for us to give some students that little additional support that they need and, and already have that transportation to be able to get them home. So this accounts for snacks for the students after school because they're going to be hungry. And then it, it allows for an hourly rate for someone to then be facilitating that support and helping students become more successful. And you can see, the previous number was thirteen point four-six. This is just a seven thousand dollar investment, but we prioritized it as number three, that's why you're seeing it in this way. And this is something that I think a lot of districts might tuck into their level service budget. But we felt in the name of transparency and honesty, we wanted to make sure we're calling this out as a new investment. And then here you see the big red line. So this is where the leadership team, we looked at all of the investments that you see here on the sheet and we decided, where are we going to draw the red line? And what do we think our community could actually handle? And what do we think that we need to go out and recommend as a leadership team, as the educational experts in the district? What do we think that we're going to get the biggest return on investment for? And so currently, we had a, a point, a, a point five-five FTE SLP. We've increased that to a point seven FTE in the FY twenty unbudgeted budget to try to meet the needs of students that we're not able to meet right now. We're having the hardest time recruiting somebody because it's a part-time position and these jobs are in high demand. So we're putting some additional funding into FY twenty-two in hopes that we can repost that position as an, as a one-point-oh FTE and actually be able to hire a speech-language pathologist. Without this investment, we end up contracting the service. This, the need doesn't go away, it's just the way that we meet it changes. And that is less efficient than having our own person. It's the same thing with the BCBA. We can either pay some, you know, pay an extra inflated rate to a contracted services organization or we can hire our own person. And that comes with so many benefits. So this is where the leadership team drew the red line. If you look in your packet, you'll see that there's more investments below the red line. I'm not gonna go into depth on those tonight because when you have time with the leadership team, they're going to clearly articulate to you what's in their budget and what's not. And so you'll hear from their perspective, the implications of them not being included in the red line. And we really wanted to just give you a place to see what we're recommending so that you can then give us some direction on how you'd like to see us refine.
So we designed this slide to just kind of put the last three-year budgets in a row for you and simplify it in just four numbers across the board so you can visualize it a little different. The top line is our total operating expenses. This is everything we just spoke of, all included, compared to our FY twenty and FY nineteen approved budgets. This isn't what we actually spent, this is just the approved budget. Underneath that, you have your expense offsets. This is programs that we generate revenue off of, like our pre-K classes or our circuit breaker. Above, under that is our revenues. That includes things like our Chapter Seventy funding or our state transportation aid. You take both your expense offsets and your revenues away from your operating budget and you're left with your net operating budget. And this has resulted in a fourteen point eleven percent increase, which is the assessment that that town sees. So here is what we're normally used to seeing. This is the slide you would normally vote on to approve it. This is the DESI-approved categories. One thing I did notice during this budget cycle is the Department of Education only has about six different categories. I think on here, we have nine. So our instructional services category, we actually break out in a little bit more detail on our DESI-approved categories. But within here, you can see a lot of the major increases are in tuition and in, in teacher salaries. This is how we sort of manage our district though. We do it by site. So by location, we have each of the elementary schools, the athletic department, central office, district, district maintenance, all our fringe benefits, the special education and our technology. You can see the total increase is around four point six million, which results in the thirteen point four-three percent increase to the operating budget. So this is just kind of visualization to see where we're spending most of our money. Approximately fifty-nine percent of our total budget is wrapped up in personnel. So this is why you see the big number of the COLA increase and the step increase. The second biggest category has grown to be our out-of-district tuitions. This comes in at around thirteen percent. And the smallest one is, is the administration and the instructional services. But these other categories off to the left do not include personnel. This is just either contracted services or materials. The personnel section at around sixty percent is across the board. So out of the approximately four point seven million dollar increase, these are the categories that represent their portion of the increase. So the teachers come in at twenty-one percent of the four million dollars. This is what this represents. So out of the four million dollar increase, we're seeing twenty-five percent of that is due to out-of-district tuitions. Or thirteen percent is capital operation and maintenance, while fifteen percent of the total four million is due to insurance increases. So this is just a different way to visualize and see kind of what chunk, what department is, is contributing to the increase in areas. So it now comes into where the calculation is. So this is where it gets a little more detailed. So at the top line is where you see the four point nine, four point six million dollar increase. This is everything we just talked about before. Underneath that, you take away your reoccurring offsets. This is, like I said, the school choice, the preschool tuition. We don't have any special, special needs intake anymore, but we did in the past, our facilities rental. And this is where you'll now see the special ed grant I talked about before. I had said there was a three hundred and sixty-six dollar expense increase and the exact same amount you see here on the revenue side, which is why it doesn't result in any kind of increase to the town. But it does contribute to the thirteen point four-three percent increase in our operating budget. So you're, at the end of that, you're left with approximately thirty-seven million. From there, you take in all our revenue sources, the main one being Chapter Seventy. The second biggest one is transportation. We also, in, on occasion, do receive charter school reimbursement in the past. I think last year, we had two students attending a charter school. We have to pay for these students to go there, but the state does give us money back. So we take this off the assessment if there is any. This year, the state hasn't told us yet if we have any kids attending it. They usually give that number out sometime around mid-January, so if it changes, we will update it. We are seeing a decrease in Medicaid reimbursements next year. This, this is mainly due to re, uh, recording requirements. They have issued a lot of different rules and it, it, the word around is that it's decreasing everyone's reimbursements. So I've taken that into consideration here. And also, one thing that has gone up is our interest income. It went up last year, but we didn't adjust the budget for it, so we are doing that this year. So our excess deficiency is the next biggest category. This is uncertified, so this number is definitely subject to change. But we did submit it, I believe, on October first, I might have done it, but it was sometime in October. And it did come in at approximately two hundred and seventeen thousand. So you take all these items away and again, you're left with approximately thirty-three point two million dollar net assessment to the towns, which is up fourteen point eleven percent. So you take that thirty-three million dollar number and that's what we assess the towns at. I think back in October, I gave you the enrollment update and it came out at approximately, I think, a seventeen or a point three-seven percent shift away from Hamilton going towards Wenham. This, this results in approximately a thirteen point seven-seven percent increase to the town of Hamilton and a fourteen point seven-one increase to the town of Wenham. So in addition to this, we have our debt service. So we still are paying for the Cutler roof in the summer twenty thirteen projects. We bonded this, I believe, at the end of twenty fourteen. In addition to that, we have the Bukeur boiler and the Winthrop boiler projects. We do have the Winthrop sprinkler project now, now online and that is a band with a payment principal paydown. In addition to that, we are budgeting approximately fifteen thousand dollars in interest for the capital projects that Tom talked about earlier if it was approved. So our debt service budget is coming in around four hundred and fifteen thousand. And as you can see, that's the same percentage that gets split out as our operating budget as for the debt service budget.
So before we answer questions, we'll just remind you of the timeline. Again, these are just preliminary numbers. The good news is, is that they're most likely to go down from here as we get more information and we refine the budget further. Again, we have that due date. Again, we have that due date on the twentieth where the leadership team will be giving any refinements or possible reductions to their current proposals. We will then present to you, we'll make sure you have the tentative budget in its entirety well before January eighth, so you'll have time to review that. Vinnie and I will be working on it over the winter break, so we can get that to you. And then Wednesday, January eighth, will be your vote of the tentative budget. And remember, this is just starting the public conversation, really. We know that there's going to be changes between tentative budget and final read in February. We're fully ready for that. You'll hear from the leadership team on January fourteenth and fifteenth, and we already have those agendas. If they're not already, if they're not posted yet, they're ready to be posted. And you'll be, see the breakdown. We have mostly the schools on the fourteenth, and then a lot of the essential operations on the fifteenth, just so you can kind of get in school mode and then get in essential operations modes. We've grouped them in that way. And there will be opportunities for you to hear directly from the leadership team members about the FY twenty, return on investment from the current budget. How is that serving our students well? You'll hear what's in the FY twenty-one proposal, and you'll hear what's not in the FY twenty-one proposal. We think that's really important to sharing with the community how we're being good stewards of their tax dollars and the choices that we're making, but also putting them on notice of what the upcoming needs are in the future years so that no one's being caught by surprise. We have a joint meeting scheduled with both Hamilton and Wenham on January twenty-ninth at seven PM. And then any additional meetings will come after that. That date was strategically selected to be after the tentative approval and after the first public hearing, which will be on January twenty-second, so that we can have a really informed, productive conversation together as we assess what is the capacity of our communities this year. And then we also have another public hearing scheduled for February fifth, which is the same night that you will vote the final budget. So the community will have another chance to express their support and/or concerns with the budget. And then town meeting is April fourth. So in between that final approval and town meeting, we'll be doing a lot of communicating, creating different ways for people to understand what's in the budget and what's not, and trying to really make it accessible for everyone in the community so they understand what the current needs are of our students and what we're asking for. So with that, I know it was a lot of information. We're happy to entertain any questions or just hear any comments that you have about the current preliminary budget numbers. Peter?
How can I put this? I know you, you were both put into a situation with a certain facts. How much of this four-point-seven-million dollars could have been foreseen in years past that that was going to happen this year?
Well, I think the, the easiest way to think about that would, to be think about the deficit, the projected deficit that we received in July. So we, if we knew, a lot of those things, we knew were coming, right? We knew we, we had the potential of needing a kindergarten teacher. We knew we had the potential of needing a third pre-K class. We knew we had the potential of having increasing numbers in our out-of-district tuition, and we just didn't have that in the budget. You know, there's lots of reasons why that happened. But that, that does make this budget particularly challenging because we're starting with a significant increase right from day one before we even look at the contractual obligations. I think it's also kind of the perfect storm to have this year of the contract happening at the same time that we also have this deficit happening, at the same time that we also have some significant projections of student needs, gives us the, the situation that we're in.
So it wasn't a surprise to some people who were in the know.
I don't think it was a surprise to some of the people at the table, that you knew some of the stuff was coming.
Oh, yeah, maybe because I'm new to the committee.
Well, I think that July email was a big surprise.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
So does this budget include the conversation we just had with Tom?
Yes, in terms of debt service.
Only the fifteen grand for interest. So the million dollars, we would suggest we go out as a debt exclusion. That, that would be paid over approximately ten years.
And the fifteen is just the interest?
Fifteen is just the interest that
Debt service.
That our advisors have said will be due in FY twenty-one.
You know, what's also not in here is OPEB, so I just want to, again, point that out.
Yep.
We presented that to the leadership team as a new investment proposal, and it made mid-priority, based on all the other needs of the district.
The new education law that just got passed, has, how does that factor into our budget as far as future reimbursements?
Or Chapter Seven?
Chapter Seventy, which I think we'll end up losing, but how about transportation and circuit breaker?
So I, we are calculating that that will probably have like a fifty-thousand-dollar increase which would be factored in. It's a minimal difference.
No, I just wanted to make sure that was put on the table.
So I would like to make a motion that we adjourn in ten minutes.
Second?
Yeah, no problem. You guys, do you hear the motion?
Motion to adjourn in ten minutes.
Hold this table.
To adjourn in ten minutes?
Yeah. All those in favor?
Does that mean there's no more budget questions at this time?
Sorry.
That's what it means.
Yeah.
Set in timer. Ten minutes.
I had a high number in mind, I didn't have that high of a number.
Yeah, but again, Julie stated it more than once, and he did as well. I want to make sure that, again, I want to reiterate, because, you know, the
This is like a monopoly number? It's not the number you're going to the banker with?
Yes.
We were going to wear T-shirts that said, "These are not the real numbers."
And I'll, I'll tell you what my fear is, right? My fear was even having this conversation tonight.
No.
Right? Because I think this number is the point where it's going to be very vocal around town for the next few weeks. And that's why I started the conversation with what communication have we had with the outside, you know, town folks in the town? Because I'm sure there are phone calls going on right now.
I'm pretty sure they're not. It's like almost eleven o'clock at night.
I'd want this phone call. You know, and I want to make sure that everyone knows that we're, you know, it is a work in progress. You know, it, it's sometimes that's, that's really hard to express, no matter how many times you blatantly say it. You know, so that, that's just where my concern is.
But, but I think it's important, though, to, as Julie has said from the outset, to be transparent.
Right.
If we keep those two things in mind, they go hand in hand, transparent and a work in progress. And together, we will get through this.
You know, I, I think that the other, this is a much larger conversation, but where we could stop the bleeding from this happening year over year. You know, that, that's really what we have to, have to do. You know, and I know that's a caller.
We have lots of things in the works. The, the thing that the community, that we will really hope the community can understand is that this will take time. It's about shifting culture. It's about redesigning programming. And it's going to take a lot of, it's going to take a lot of time to study. We've already have several things in motion this year to really make sure that we're solving the right problem. Because the last thing we want to do is over-promise and under-deliver. And so we want to make sure that we're really doing, taking the time to do that root cause analysis. We're doing it in two large areas right now. One, we have an early literacy data team that is just beginning to form. They have a planning meeting on January third where they're going to be studying deeply what's going on with early literacy across our district, and are we serving our students to the best of our capacity? We also have a special education case analysis going on where we're looking at current out-of-district placements. When did they happen? What, why did they happen? When did we eliminate certain programming? What are parents asking for? What would it cost to develop those programs? Because we really, I mean, I would like to be really bold and say, can we make a commitment to say that rarely, if never, a student has to be placed outside of the Hamilton-Wenham schools? Because we're going to do everything it takes to meet their needs right here within our four walls. That takes a serious level of commitment. And it will take, even if everyone was on board today, it would still take us a good three to five years to really sort of create a, a, a plan for that.
No, I agree, because I was actually just sort of thinking that there was definitely some stuff in there that you saw with the groundwork of cost savings long-term. I know when we sort of did that, what was it, a year or two ago? Soften the Blow, we did sort of a breakout of what the cost savings would be.
Yep.
You know, so that's something I would probably suggest. Sort of moving into, you know, as we move into the stuff for January, it helps a little bit, you know, putting this much upfront, it will, you know, will cut, you know, hopefully lead to this much savings over time.
And our community can feel really good about the FY nineteen investment that they made in supporting three-and-a-half additional FTEs specifically for our student services department. We're already outpacing the, the cost-saving projections that were estimated at that time. And so if things keep going in the, in a positive direction, that'll be a great, a great story for us to tell in terms of ROI.
Thank you for putting this together. Do you guys have any other questions right now?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next, just a recap on the leadership team winter gathering.
Just a real quick positive note. We had our, our district leadership team winter gathering today. We hosted it at the middle school, in the middle school multipurpose room. It was an all-hands-on-deck team effort to try to create more of like a cocktail party vibe for our teachers and staff, to really thank them and express our gratitude for all the good work that they do. We had our student chorus harmony performed a couple of songs. And then we had three gentlemen from the high school who basically provided some jazz, jazz ensemble for us. And I was expecting them to play for fifteen minutes. They played for two hours almost, I think. They were awesome. They were really amazing. Everyone, the feedback was really positive. Everyone seemed to have a really great time. Michelle Horgan was there helping pass hors d'oeuvres. And so I think overall, the event was a really big success, and we're feeling so grateful and appreciative of our staff and hope that it sends them off on their winter break knowing how much we value them.
And thank you for organizing that, Julian, being the main mind trust or whatever behind it, so.
Thank you.
Fun to do.
The committee reports, do we want to push these the next meeting? Well, capital, do you think, can you guys get through this real quickly, or?
I, I would suggest that we actually move to the consent agenda, because I think there's a couple of timely things that need to be approved, like field trips, right?
Okay.
I agree.
All right.
So table eight.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion to table that?
Okay, and I get a motion to table the committee reports?
I make a motion that the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District tables the committee reports, number eight on the agenda, A, B, and C.
Second?
All those in favor? Moving on to the consent agenda.
I'd like to remove the trip to Peru.
Okay, can we get a motion, sorry, anything else needs to be removed?
I don't know if this is the time to state it, but the July thirty-first executive session minutes, I believe there was a typo in there. It said that in negotiating the Director of Facilities Maintenance and Operations contract, that it could be a three-year contract, but the actual direction was a three- or four-year contract with the option to extend to a fifth year at the end of the fourth year pending successful, or at the end of year one pending positive evaluations. And it didn't accurately reflect that.
Yeah, that was my recollection. Well, my recollection was more like, do what you need to do, but. So we need to, so we should pull those.
Yeah.
So we're also going to pull July thirty-first.
July thirty-first.
I make a motion that the Hamilton-Wenham School District accepts the consent agenda with the exception of the field trip to Peru, pulling the field trip to Peru, as well as the July thirty-first, two-thousand-and-nineteen executive session minutes.
Second?
Second?
All those in favor? That's a, all right, so the trip to Peru.
So in looking at the itinerary and then looking at the alert, the travel alert, the itinerary has a city listed that's actually on a Level Four alert, which is like, don't go there. However, it's near Machu Picchu, so I can understand why safety might be a less of a concern. But if we approve this, I feel that we should make note to people who are putting down deposits that it could be canceled at any time. And I also feel that we should review the alert, you know, a month in advance. So, you got twenty-five seconds. So we have to decide if we're going to do it this meeting, next meeting?
So what do you think we need to take? What actions are you saying that we need to take?
Saying if you approve it, you should put a condition that there should be some sort of notification to parents that they could lose their money and that we're going to review it a month in advance. Or some other timeframe.
And that would be contingent upon the State Department, I'm guessing?
Yeah. We can send, we can send them no matter what it says. But we should be informed on what it says.
So do you want to just push that to the next meeting?
Do we know, is that going to impact the trip, though? If we move it to January?
It's two thousand and twenty-one.
Oh, it's twenty-one, oh.
Yeah, it's not, it's not like
I thought it was the twenty, I was like
I know, because I thought there was a Peru trip this year, too, but
Can you get a motion to table that, then, please?
I make a motion that we table the consent agenda item for the field trip to Peru. Second?
Second?
A second, second by Jean?
All those in favor? Let's table, and then how we need to table the July thirty-first?
I make a motion that we table the approval of July thirty-first, two-thousand-and-nineteen executive session minutes.
Pending edits?
Pending change and edits. Can I get a second?
Get a second?
Second?
Oh, second. Sure, second.
Aye.
Now, do you want to adjourn?
We already did, and we're already adjourned. We moved to adjourn in ten minutes, ten minutes is up.
So do these things that we just passed counter now?
Maybe, maybe not.
Well.
Depends on, I don't
Adjourned before
Look at the book!
Yeah, before they were tabled, then.
Tabled, okay. But we'll bring it up, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Put them on future agendas.
Okay.